And good evening to our West Orange community and we're delighted that you have joined us on this Monday, May 3rd at our virtual meeting. And good evening also to Dr. Cascone, members of the board, our student liaisons, and Mrs. Flowers. And would you please do the honors of roll call?
Yes, Madam President, good evening everyone. Roll call please. Mrs. Welter?
Yes.
Mrs. Markinger? Mr. Rothstein?
Here.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Present.
President Trick Scales?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Flowers. And our student liaisons, we are excited to get a report from you. So which of you will be starting first?
I'm so sorry to disappoint you and tell you that we actually don't have anything. Oh, now I feel like I disappointed the board.
You did. We get so excited because you always have such wonderful things to tell us.
Next week, we definitely have something in store, so stay tuned for that. Okay, we just wanted to say for the seniors, congratulations on all your commitments. We saw the, you know, the Instagram page. I hope you all are following it. It's a great page. Congratulations to everybody and we hope to see more.
That's fabulous. Thank you.
I think that if anyone is interested, the Instagram page, correct me if I'm wrong, Andre, is W O H S College Decisions 2025.
About to go look at it right now. I didn't want to say it because I didn't know it, so.
So you're going to confirm for us?
Yes, yes, I am.
Great.
W O H S 2021 College Decisions. Is there a way to put that in the chat?
Yep, I can put that in.
Great.
Okay.
Fabulous. Okay. Certainly an exciting day, May 1st. All right, so Dr. Cascone, I think we'll start with you this evening with your report.
Thank you, President Trick Scales, and good evening, members of the board, our student liaisons, and all those in attendance tonight. Welcome. Before we get into the budget preamble and presentation, just a couple of kind of top of mind, just sort of announcements and recognitions. Of course, this week is National Teacher Appreciation Week, which started today. And so, you know, we'll be doing various activities and acknowledgements over the course of the week to thank our professional educators for all they do. I put up a video today on social media and really just kind of acknowledged, you know, a teacher from my relatively recent, you know, educational past and my master's degree a number of years ago. And, you know, what I mentioned in it is that excellent teachers see things in us that we don't see in ourselves. And, you know, just again, to encourage everyone, this is a great week to act on that impulse to say, you know what, I'm going to reach out to a teacher, I'm going to email them, even tell them when you see them in school this week, what they've meant to you. I know that they would greatly appreciate that. And so again, we thank all of our educators and we know that, you know, this year, like for all of us, has been a particularly challenging year. And if we've had, you know, any successes this year, it's been done largely by the great efforts of those teachers. So we thank them for all they do. And this is also Asian American Pacific Islander American Month, Heritage Month. And so we're really excited to be paying a bit more mind to this month, this year. It is something which we've, you know, which we've acknowledged in the past, but perhaps not with the concerted effort that we are this year. And I think in light of the events which have been transpiring in our nation, you know, this is at a time when our, the Asian American Pacific Islander members of our community, I know, are thankful for our standing with them in solidarity. And so we have some really exciting things planned in the classroom. Our English Language Arts teachers, our Social Studies teachers, our media specialists have been just curating resources and engaging in those types of activities throughout the month. I'm excited that at the next board meeting on next Monday, we have some student members and staff members who advise the Chinese club. And it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Olivia, it's the, Andre, it's Asian Fusion Club or Asian, what is, do we know the name of the club? Asian Heritage Club or Asian Fusion? Do you know the name offhand?
I don't want to butcher it either.
Exactly. But I did ask for clarification today in an email to get the exact title, as well as the staff members and students who'd be participating. But they're excited to come on the 10th and present on some of the work they're doing. So we are likewise excited for that as well. And those are just my two kind of off agenda announcements. And at this time, I'll just kind of transition into the budget presentation. So in a few moments, Ms. Flowers and I will present the salient elements and informational points relative to the proposed final budget for the 2021-22 school year. Prior to doing that, however, I would like to take some time to tell the story, if you will, of the development of this year's budget. The development of a school budget typically begins preliminarily in the mid to late fall. And it is at this time that the administration begins to develop projections relative to expenses, you know, and increases in expenses, which are predicted to be, again, incurred. Now, there are five key points on which the administration has some degree of certainty at that juncture. The first are the estimated increases in benefit costs, prescription dental and medical, and the projected increases in salaries. It is relevant to note that all three of the district's collective bargaining units, the W O E A or Teachers Association, the W O A A or Administrators Association, and Local 68, the association representing custodians, custodial supervisors, maintenance, buildings and grounds, and bus drivers, are currently being negotiated. And the industry average for recently settled collective bargaining agreements is used as the benchmark for that. In addition are the projected increases in transportation costs and out of district tuition for out of district special needs students. Finally, the district administration is able to identify with some degree of certainty any additional staff needs which might be required for the upcoming school year. In this particular case, and as you will see reflected later in the budget presentation, the district added seven certificated instructional or student contact positions. All these represented new and increased expenses totaling somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $600,000. And yes, much as it has been said, relative to the district's intent to also add two administrator positions, it should be noted that the addition of these positions represented a net loss of one administrator and overall savings to the district. Two key unknowns at this juncture are the state aid allocation, which the district will receive, and which is crucial in year in and out in balancing the budget, and the percentage increase on the tax levy, which the board would support. Now, the projected state aid is typically not received by the district until mid to late February. And that's only weeks before the administration and board must forward a proposed budget to the county office for approval. So understanding the critical financial situation many individuals in the township are facing, the board was somewhat resolved to mitigate any additional increases in monthly taxes to the average taxpayer in the township. And as such, early in the process, the board was interested in understanding if the district could move forward a budget at 0% tax levy. Now, having received projected increases in transportation costs of 26%, as well as increases in benefit costs, 13% prescription, 11% medical, and 9% dental, as well as forecasting collective bargaining agreements settling on or around the industry average in New Jersey, and annual increases in cost of special education tuition, the forecast was not good, particularly if the district were attempting to pass a budget at 0% tax levy. Now, the board and administration began public-facing informational and feedback gathering sessions on the 2021-22 budget in December, at which time the district hosted a budget town hall. The purpose of this town hall was to narrate the aforementioned challenges, but as importantly, to provide the community an opportunity to provide feedback on their perspectives relative to the budget, as well as priorities as they saw them. Regrettably, only approximately 15 people attended that session, though the link to the video was subsequently shared with every household in the district. Now, in advance of the final presentation of the proposed budget on the 18th, the district administration presented various models in public relative to what the impact would be on most notably staffing and projected staff cuts if the board were to pass a budget at 0%, 1%, and 1.5%. Now, of course, the administration's modeling and projections for these various budgets was handicapped by virtue of the fact that we were only estimating what our state aid would be. At that time, the only message that we were getting from our county office was that state aid would likely be frozen or flat from the previous year. Further, what we also did not understand was, would it be frozen at what our initial allocation was, or the allocation after state cut $1.5 million from our budget this year? And I do believe that that is a point that's relevant and worth elaborating on a bit more, as there does seem to be some misconception within the organization that the district and board are sitting, if you will, on some degree of surplus that could be used. Typically, in as like this school year, school districts receive the state allocation, which is finalized and voted on ultimately by the state legislature in their vote and/or approval of the state's fiscal year budget as prepared by the governor in April. Having this number as a definite prior to the finalization of the school district budget ensures the district can count on that revenue moving forward in the fiscal year. However, last year, due to the pandemic circumstances, the state of New Jersey delayed their final approval of the budget until September of 2020. And in the passing of the state's final budget, the district was informed that $1.5 million of the aid originally promised would be withheld. Of course, the school district fiscal year begins July 1, which meant that the school district needed to find $1.5 million in the existing general fund. It should be noted, as there has been much spoken of the district prioritization of staff relative to cuts, that the district absorbed that $1.5 million cut without cutting a single position. Further, and also along the lines of these allusions to a surplus, it should also be noted that during the duration of the closures last year, and as pursuant to state legislation, federal legislation, all employees continue to be paid whether they were serving in their job description or not. As we awaited our state figures, we continued to look for efficiencies within the operating budget, not going too far down the path of staff cuts, as we understood that if the worst case scenario came to pass relative to state aid and the board's decision to go with a 0% tax levy, this would have resulted in cutting of approximately 100 jobs or more. So we went about eliminating any unnecessary discretionary funding. We cut supply lines by 20% and 10%, looked for ways to be more efficient in our use of custodial overtime and teacher coverages, moved capital improvement projects out of the general fund and into the capital reserve, and more recently moved costs originally budgeted for the general fund into the S R 2 grant, including needed funds for HVAC remediation and the refreshing of technology necessitated by the distribution of nearly 7,000 student devices, and continuation of the scheduled implant security upgrades to the buildings, including but not limited to finishing all the mantraps and security systems in the school entryways. But let's take a slight pause about this idea of capital, maintenance, and emergency reserve. In the end of a fiscal year, if a district is operating on a so-called surplus, a school district is limited in the amount of that surplus that can be carried over into the successive fiscal year. 2% of the fund balance, which is basically the prior year expenditures, can be carried over into the capital, maintenance, and emergency reserve funds. Now, when I came to West Orange, and if you refer back to budget presentations from the previous years, you'll notice that this district was carrying no capital, maintenance, or emergency reserve forward, or very little. The danger in this is if during the middle of year, an emergent need arises, like for example, a mold remediation or an unexpected physical plan issue, our district would have had no funds to complete those projects. Moving into this fiscal year, for the first time in a number of years, our district was able to carry forward over $1 million in reserves. Now, the reserve carrier ended up being crucial and necessary, as 698,000 of it was used to fund the HVAC remediation and the purchasing of hundreds of purification devices, which ultimately enabled the school district to open in January. 300,000 of that is being carried over into the 2021-22 school year to budget, into that budget to fund capital improvements. Any remaining surplus from this year will fund $1.5 million in budgeted fund balance, which ultimately also lowers the tax payments by an additional 1.5%. Additionally, this year, 800,000 of local funds were allocated for COVID and nursing-related supplies, B and G supplies, not including thousands of dollars that were from the S R 1 grant. And again, it is worth noting that while many have said, first it was HVAC and that was taken care of, I do believe that it is worth noting that we were able, while we were able to do the necessary remediations and fixes to open the buildings, the roughly $35 million worth of needed HVAC remediations and modernization, as included in the previously constructed and proposed referendum, remain. Further, there remains no less than $4 million worth of HVAC remediation, which ideally would be completed of next school year, in advance of next school year. Let's get back to the budget. So in around the second week of February, the administration received notification of its state aid allocation for the upcoming school year. And yes, we were pleased to learn that the state would continue their commitment to the aid equalization payments to which West Orange has been afforded, and we ended up receiving north of about $5 million in state aid. Still, if the administration were to move forward a 0% budget, this still would have necessitated cutting up to 40 or 50 positions. After some deliberation and conferral, the administration found a compromise with the board and moved forward a budget at 1.5%. The receipt of the state aid at a 1.5% tax levy left a deficit of approximately $2 million. And while we continued to look for additional efficiencies, it was at this point that we began in earnest conversations about the cutting of staff to make up some of this deficit. The proposed budget was presented to the board in public on March 18th and subsequently forwarded to the county, at which time it received approval. Between that approval and the April 19th board meeting, at which we received substantial feedback from parents and community members relative to intended staff cuts, the district in good faith went back to the drawing board and carved down its operating budget even further to offset these cuts. The district director of diversity, equity, and inclusion has been removed from the budget, representing a net decrease of two administrative positions in the district. I think it's worth speaking to a point which a number of community members have noted, which is that administration should be the first place to cut, and no cut should be made to student contact positions. A school budget in which over 70% of the total operating budget is dedicated to salaries and benefits, approximately 40 of those salaries, now 38, are administrator salaries. The district has approximately 800 certificated staff members. Further, 22 of the original 28 positions proposed for cuts, 22 of the original 28 positions proposed for cuts have been restored. The total number of cut positions going into the 21-22 school year are six, only two of which will require individuals to seek employment elsewhere. Over the course of the last two fiscal years, my administration and the boards have closed millions of dollars in deficits while maintaining curricular and academic programming and significantly limiting the loss of jobs. Class size has not been impacted, extracurricular and athletic offerings remain constant. Last year, we were able to do this by going to the 2% and utilizing approximately $1 million in bank cap. This year, even with all the financial challenges previously mentioned, and going up to just 1.5%, the staffing and landscape of the school district will remain virtually unchanged, and in fact, will be enhanced with the addition of certificated positions which have and will have a direct contact on, in most cases, our neediest students, including special education, middle school interventionists, and an additional occupational therapist. Now, as it has been discussed and is forecasted, it is said that our district will receive over $8 million through the American Rescue Act, or S R 3. This week, we received official notification from the State Department of Education, but it still remains uncertain how much money the district will receive, when it will receive it, and what will be the allowable expenses and required timeline within which these funds need to be spent. Certainly, if the district is to be allocated these funds, it would provide us with a host of possibilities, including further expanding supplemental programming for students who need it during the year, the hiring of additional reading specialists and interventionists, much-needed funding for ongoing HVAC remediations, additional mental health supports, and even potentially restoring some of the positions which needed to be cut out of the operating budget. And finally, you'll note in the last two years, one of the district goals was expanding upon its pursuit of grant opportunities to supplement revenue. Over the course of the last two years, the district has brought in millions of dollars in grant applications and will continue to look for ways in which to supplement its revenue in this matter. It's worth noting that grants typically cannot be used for salaries or benefits or transportation, and in most cases, cannot simply be used to buy technology. Cuts are never easy, and informing an individual that they will not be employed is perhaps the most difficult conversation as a superintendent one has to have. They are decisions that rest heavy on mine and the board's shoulders and in which we take no pleasure. I feel assured, however, that this administration worked extremely hard to not only be deferential to the school district's constituents, but also exercising some degree of fiscal responsibility and good faith to the citizens and constituents of the township, which made their voices heard relative to the need to stave off the ever-increasing taxation. When one looks at the more recent history of school finance and the building of budgets, the year 2010 represented a watershed moment. It was in this year that a bill was passed under the Chris Christie administration, which capped the local tax levy at 2%. Prior to that, there was no limit to the percentage which a school district could propose to the percentage of the tax levy. These budgets were moved forward for public vote, and as such, the people, not simply the administration and five board members, had an opportunity to come out and let their will be known. So if the budget had a healthy increase, then that was the decision, the implications of which had shared ownership of the community. It was not simply the board or the administration that were bearing the criticism of those decisions. Similarly, if it were the will of the people to pass a lean budget with cuts, its implications then would likewise be borne by the populace. In this day, however, these responsibilities are borne exclusively by the board and the administration, which is in the unenviable position of trying to predict and foresee what the market would have borne and what the will of the people would have been. A 2% max increase in tax levy with expenses that increase annually between 3% and 9% at least does not take a certified public accountant to know is an upside-down financial model, which is not sustainable and is moving simply in one direction sooner rather than later. And that is the altering of the landscape of not only West Orange School District, but public school districts around the country. School funding has and always will be a significant issue. The West Orange school system and New Jersey public schools are some of the finest in the country. And in fact, in a more recent study and report, New Jersey public schools were rated as number one in the country. And it is no coincidence that our schools are some of the best funded in the country, albeit largely through the local tax levy and on the back of the local taxpayers. Riding the wave of previous boom economies, contracts, staffing, programming, both academic and extracurricular, have blossomed into the multifaceted and dimensional institutions we see today. Institutions which provide a well-rounded and holistic experience for students. However, with the aforementioned and discussed financial challenges, uncertainty abounds as to whether we can continue with our financial limitations to fund all which we presently have. Further, we know that in some cases, even what we have is not adequate. For example, there are cries and advocacy for the establishment of universal preschool, which certainly makes good sense, particularly for those students whose families cannot afford to send their children to preschool. We know that the social-emotional needs of our children have never been greater, and yet our school counselors and student assistance counselors have unrealistic caselos and numbers of students who they serve. I have stated publicly during previous budget presentations that West Orange and all public school districts will need to identify what are truly their core and critical missions. What services, staff, and programs can we afford not to have and make some tough decisions about what although great to have, we simply can't afford anymore? Some folks have reached out to me and have said that it's a shame that it's always the arts that get cut first or extracurricular opportunities. I would agree. But when presented with a choice between core academic programs and even social, emotional, and mental health reports, where does the truth, the right, lie? The fact remains that for many students, our public schools are the only places that they might be able to get access to, yes, high-quality education, but also opportunities to paint, sculpt, play an instrument, sing in a select choir, play on an athletic team, and qualify for a college scholarship to play athletics at the next level. And then there are the cries of egregiously generous compensation, which is afforded for our professional educators. I can say as someone who's worked in the profession for over 20 years, there has never been more expected on a daily basis from our professional educators. The level of complexity that comes with being an effective teacher these days has never been greater. And ironically, through this pandemic, the critical nature of our public schools and our teachers for a variety of reasons, not the least of which that it provides families the necessary caretaking in order for them to have their own careers and know that their children are looked after and well taken care of during the day, has come to the fore. Our educational professionals per capita are some of the best educated professionals in the workforce, most of which have earned master's degrees and some even doctoral degrees. In most societies of the world, educators are, as I would argue, should be held in the highest esteem and occupy one of the highest stations in society. And still, a teacher who has worked 25 years in a profession, has a master's degree and 45 credits for further study, is begrudged for making a six-figure salary, while a recent college graduate comes out with an engineering degree and is paid $85,000 a year. And CEOs of large corporations, the list of which was just released, are making $50 to $60 million a year. Yes, it is safe to say that our priorities as society are disjointed, and this disconnect is laid bare perhaps nowhere more than in a local school district budget. That being said, I believe it is safe to say that for one more year, and even amidst unprecedented, unfathomable challenges, financial and otherwise, this board and this administration has succeeded in minimizing organizational impact, building and augmenting programs, and exercising some degree of good faith and fiscal responsibility. However, all things being equal, the challenges, the hard decisions, and the public concern and criticism unfortunately are going to be an annual exercise. That being said, it is an exercise in which we must engage collaboratively and inclusively as a community. And this was one of a number of key takeaways from this year, which is to strive to ensure that from the onset of the process, all stakeholders are as engaged as the administration and the board. I thank you for your time and your patience as I work through that statement. And at this time, I would turn it back over to Ms. Flowers to begin the presentation proper.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. Lauren, if you'll please advance to slide three, please. Good evening again to everyone. Call your attention to our budget work goals. These can be found on our website for your reference. Next slide, please, Ms. Grautis. As Dr. Cascone has already walked us through the timeline of the budget, these were just some notable dates. Next slide, please. Again, for your reference, we've included the glossary of budget terms for you, if you wanted to refer back, if you go back to the presentation. Next slide. Here we're sharing the list of shared service programs that we participate. Next slide, please. Our revenues for the 2021-22 budget, some highlights. In Fund 10, it includes tax levy increase of the 1.5% with a total state aid of $21.9 million, which is a net increase of $4.5 million over last year. For budgeted fund balance, we have 1.5 million back, we're putting back into the budget from this year's surplus, which is going towards tax relief, otherwise known as budgeted fund balance. We also have a capital reserve withdrawal of $300,000 to fund capital projects, which also goes towards tax relief. In Fund 20, those are our restricted funds from the local, state, and federal agencies. For example, the E S S A Title I funds are for improving the academic achievement of the disadvantaged. Title II funds are for professional development for staff. Title III funds go towards our English language learners programs. And Title IV funds are for character education and safe schools. We also have IDEA budgeted here. Those funds are used to offset our tuition special education. The grand total for our revenues for the 2021-22 budget is $177.2 million. Next slide, please. And then we have our proposed expenditures. These are all the categories where our allocations of the budget are, and their percentages for a total of $177.2 million. So we have a balanced budget that we're presenting this evening. Next slide, please. Our tax levy comparison, we are proposing a 1.5% increase over last year, and that just shows the calculation compared to last year. Next slide. Okay, our tax levy impact on West Orange homeowners, the tax levy is calculated on a calendar year basis. So for purposes of the school budget, tax levy calculation is half of the current budget levy is added to half of the proposed budget levy to calculate the calendar year tax levy. Next slide, please. Slide 11, the tax impact based on 1.5% tax levy on an average assessed single-family home value, not the market value, is an average of monthly increase of $15.50. not the market value, is an average of monthly increase of fifteen dollars fifty cents. Next slide, please. Since the caps have been put into place in 2010, 2011, the West Orange Board of Education has passed budgets at two percent or below six times. I think it's important to note that in 2017-18, we received an additional five hundred thousand dollars and we gave it back in taxpayer relief. And in 2019, we received 3.5 million, of which we gave back three million dollars in taxpayer relief. So this is just the historical picture of the tax levy cap. Next slide, please. In prior years' budgets where we were under 2% tax levy, any unused tax levy is for use in the next three subsequent budgets. Banked cap is not a loss of revenue. It's simply allowing, it's an allowable usage where districts are eligible to go above the 2% tax cap.
Like for example, Ms. Flowers, like for example, last year, we went to 2%. We used approximately just a shade under one million dollars, which reflected a, if you go back to the previous slide, you can see that that rendered a 2.79 increase. So it's the point seven nine percent was translated into just under a million dollars in bank cap.
Correct.
And ostensibly for like the 2019-20, it's safe to assume that they also used bank cap in that year and probably maybe close to two million dollars of bank cap.
Correct. That is, thank you, Dr. Casco. And so next slide, back to slide 13, please. So you'll see. Thank you. So yes, you'll see that we presently, we have an available banked cap of four million, 4.6 million dollars.
What's, Ms. Flowers, what is the, what is the lifespan of bank caps? So in other words, we understand that, you know, every time a district passes a budget under 2%, you know, the revenue difference, like for example, this year we went to 1.5. So there's a revenue difference between 1.5 and 2% that then now will move into further bank cap for next year. What's the lifespan of this, this set of funds that's we're moving forward from this year by virtue of the 1.5? How long does a school district have to utilize that?
School districts have the next three subsequent budgets that that available banked cap. So as you see in the grid here, we have from the 2018-19 budget, we have 3.4 million dollars that's expiring in this budget. And then next budget year, we'll have 1.2 million dollars expiring when we create the next, next year's school budget. So you do have three subsequent budget years.
And that's, and that's, it's safe to say that that revenue, once not used, is, is it, is it, is it an exaggeration to say that it's, it's gone forever?
It's gone. It's gone. That allowable usage is gone. That, once that money expires, it's, you'll see next year, the number will only be a little over 1.2 because we do have, we're only going up to 1.5 this year. So there will be some increase in the line next year.
And because you're not, and because you're not able, ever able to go above 2%, there's, there's no way actually to recoup that money.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Casco. Next slide, please. Okay, so for budget expenditures and efficiencies, some major proposed increases to highlight for this year's budget, it's Dr. Cascone already shared. Medical increased by 11%, prescription 13%, dental 9%, transportation, general ed was 18%, out of district tuition is 10%. And of course, the largest impact to our budget is our salaries. Next slide, please. Okay, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Cascone. He's already covered some of this in his preamble.
Yeah, so thank you, Ms. Flowers. So, so you know, as we were going back to, you know, before we, we knew what our state aid was, we, we, you know, we were projecting that we were going to need to see some efficiencies. So we, you know, we, we reduced the instructional supply lines by ten, by 20% and the non-instructional supplies by 10%. There also are some reductions in the area of transportation, cutting down on the number of late runs in the middle school and high school, as well as the elimination of courtesy busing in grades six through 12. Presently, the district, I believe, spends about 1.8 million dollars a year on courtesy busing, which is essentially busing to students who do not qualify for busing under the statutory requirement of distance, recognizing that that was not something that we obviously wanted to remove for elementary students due to the younger nature of the students. But it realized, I believe, an efficiency of seven hundred thousand dollars?
No, actually, we, because we had to make some adjustments with the buses and with the contract, it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Next slide. So this just shows basically from the, from the preliminary budget to the final budget. The original budget included a cut of four teachers. And the final budget was a cut of one. The original budget proposed a cut of three media specialists. Final budget cuts zero. Original budget had a cut of three administrative assistants. The final budget has one. There was a retirement of a high school administrative assistant, which was reinstated for, for zero. The attendance officer was not reinstated. The nurse, high school nurse was reinstated. Communications coordinator was reinstated. High school greeter was reinstated. Lunch aids were reinstated. The assistant principal at Redwood School and Washington School remains removed. And there are removals of testing coordinator and supervisor. Both remained in the final budget. We went back into the budget. And it wasn't easy to do that. But we found a way to get it done. We had some additional retirements in the last several weeks, which also helped with breakage. And we were able to get it done. So this just demonstrates from the preliminary budget to the final budget, the staff that reinstated back in. Next slide. So as far as budget additions and efficiencies, I mentioned in my preamble, we moved expenses that were previously in the general fund, both capital projects as well as technology supplies. So we understood that we were going to have some additional expenses related to HVAC remediations. And just to speak specifically about what those are, there are twofold. One is this year, the approximately seven hundred thousand dollars, which I mentioned in my introduction, were used for a number of things, but they were used to automate our hot water univent damper systems. We have hot water univent systems and we have steam systems. Of the steam systems, you can chalk the damper open without running the risk of freezing the coil. So those were not an immediate need. However, the hot water units were a greater need and all the hot water univents have been retrofitted and fully automated with, you know, with automated digital controls. But we do have steam units that need to be done. And we also have a number of spaces, which I had mentioned in previous ventilation presentations, that are without mechanical ventilation, which have been taken offline this year and which we'd be obviously striving to get online next year, understanding, you know, will likely be, you know, a full, full operation next year and full occupancy. The other was our technology supplies. You know, we put out a lot of technology. You know, there was no digital divide in West Orange and we closed that rather quickly. But it did involve us distributing, you know, over time, over 7,000 devices. The ones that are being used on the elementary level in particular in K2 are older units. Some of those units have been failing. And so originally, we were going to engage in a three-year lease, which would have cost the district 200,000 dollars a year over three years. Through this, we're able to purchase those devices upfront, save money in successive years. And we will be able to do that out of the S R 2 grant. So we moved that funding out of the general fund and into the S R 2 grant, as well as the HVAC, which was previously in the general fund and was moved into the S R grant as well. So all told, that would have been another almost three million dollars that we would have had to find in the general fund. And that would have essentially been all staff because we've cut everything else. So we saved, thanks to, I've seen the federal government and the providing of that allotment, that entitlement through S R 2, it really saved us in the end in closing that deficit. Next slide. And just think it's worth noting, the additions to the budget, as mentioned previously, we are adding a Director of Assessment, Accountability and Intervention. But again, that represents with the removal of the Director of Equity, Diversity Equity Inclusion, it's actually a net loss of two administrative positions. We added one occupational therapist, one BD program teacher. That's for the middle school in order that our students that are currently in our elementary BD program and are aging up into the middle school have an in-district program which they can attend. One autism program for expanding autistic program. An LLD kindergarten teacher at Kelly School, a grade five teacher at Hazel School to maintain good, good class size in fifth grade at Hazel School. Two interventionists, those will both be middle school interventionists, math at Liberty School. And I believe math, I'm sorry, ELA at Liberty School and math at Edison School, special education resource room teacher and making full-time one of our district technology technicians in the technology department. Next slide, I think. So some of the capital improvement projects, these are the projects that are going to be funded out of the 300,000 dollars that we're moving out of Capital Reserve. You'll notice Gregory School structural wall and several, several small roof replacements. We understand that district-wide, we have some larger roof replacement needs that were also included in that aforementioned large referendum. It was about a 54 million dollar proposed referendum, 35 million of which was HVAC. A good portion of the remaining funds were for actual roof replacements. I would like to note for anyone that was around for the ESIP project that these are not roofs that, that were replaced during the ESIP project. And also for folks, interested folks who are familiar with the large retaining wall project at Washington School, which is on the docket. That is a project that's going to run somewhere in the neighborhood of 1 million dollars, which is amazing, isn't it? When you think about it, I guess 1 million dollars doesn't pay what it used to, right? But, you know, who wants to be a millionaire? Well, it's, you're going to need more than a million. Anyway, so the Washington School project is a million, is a million dollars. It's obviously not a project that would be very easily funded out of an annual budget. Though we could potentially do that, say, maybe taking 500,000 dollars out of the general fund and maybe moving the rest from Capital Reserve. Our plan, tentative plan now, that the board and administration have discussed, we do have a, the, the, the funding necessary for bond referendum in this budget. And we are looking at going out for a modest bond late, late fall, early winter. That would not only fund the Washington School retaining wall, but it would also potentially fund a preschool renovation project. We're doing some feasibility studies relative to using existing district facilities for a new preschool. And it would include that as well. Preschool renovations, the Washington School retaining wall, and then maybe a couple other projects that would be TBD. In the event we're not able to pass that bond, then we would need to start looking at funding that retaining wall out of the general fund, maybe in combination with Capital Reserve. Next slide, and that's that. Madam President, that is our presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Cascone and Mrs. Flowers. So I'm sure that the board may have some questions or comments. So let's start with Ms. Huerta.
Thank you, Mrs. Terry Chiggs Scales. Thank you, Mrs. Flowers, for that presentation. And Dr. Cascone for all the details. So I had a question about the univents and the capacity that we have now. How many units or classrooms are not being used right now? What is the hindrance for, you know, what, how many classrooms are we currently able to use? Are we using all of them? And what is it, is there anything that we can do now to open up more capacity in our schools?
Thank you for that question. So off the top of my head, I can't give you the exact figure, but I believe the total number of spaces district-wide that are absent mechanical ventilation is in the low 90s. Now, those are not all classrooms. A good number of those spaces are offices. And a good number of those spaces are offices that are occupied by a single person and which may have a window or purification device. So not all of them represent necessarily critical immediate needs. The vast majority of the classroom spaces are not large, full-size classrooms. Most of our, you know, class, our main type classrooms, if you want to call them that, are fine. These tend to be smaller, small group instruction spaces. Rooms that were previously not designed to be an instructional space that were turned into an instructional space. And that actually, that you asked that question, Ms. Huerta, that actually is one of the tangent points to why expanding to beyond where we are presently is a challenge. Because if we, for example, we went to full day and you now had students not being pulled into a virtual room, so to speak, a virtual small group room for some form of pull-out service, but being pulled out into an actual physical space to get that, those are some of the spaces, those tend to be the spaces right now that are offline. They're the rooms where typically we would have delivered basic skills or ESL or something of that nature. So most of them are, the majority of them are offices and the majority of the instructional spaces are small group instruction areas. Now, can we do, what can we do now? Well, first, we don't have the funding to do it now. We spent, as I mentioned before, we spent 700,000 dollars on HVAC remediations. We don't have money in this operating budget. We've been doing everything we can within our budget and within the funds we had to, like I said, do the dampers. We've installed thermostats in some spaces. And we've been doing, you know, things like that. When you talk about adding mechanical ventilation, it can get very pricey very quickly. The easiest thing is when it's simply a missing univent and the univent can simply be installed where it had been. But they're not all that easy because some of these small group instruction spaces are landlocked interior spaces. And so what it takes to actually create a system of ductwork to actually run a mechanical system from that, in a lot of cases, it requires the installation of a rooftop unit. Some of these spaces are quite costly to do that for and it requires actual mechanical drawings. So where we are presently is, we have a proposal from our architects for a scope of work to do, basically to do up the drawings for all the existing spaces that are absent of mechanical ventilation. The administration is looking to move that proposal forward to the board on May 10th, at which time then we would go, start to go out for bid for contractors that could potentially do that work. And the architects would begin to do the drawings for those spaces. And then we would prioritize which spaces would get done. And we're look, we're going to fund some of that at S R 2. And as S R 3 comes online, we would fund the remaining portion of that work at S R 3.
So that is from what I'm looking on slide 18. Out of capital projects, 1.4 million, that's what's going to be proposed to us on the 10th?
Yeah, so the one, so the one point, well, what's going to be proposed to you on the, on the 10th is the architectural and engineering services that will be needed to take that, that, that assessment and turn it into a scope of work and actual schematics that then a contractor would use to do the work. And also with some project management responsibilities too.
And with, after that, is, are we looking to address the majority of these 90 or so classrooms or spaces?
We're going to do our level best. Now, you should know that contemporaneously with this process of developing the scope of work, going out to bid, you know, beginning to get the work done, the conversations we're also having with principals is, you know, we need to be prepared. we need to be prepared to get creative with our space in the event that some of this work is ongoing. Because being, being frank, um being, being frank, um you know, every school district in the state is doing HVAC remediations. You know, so a- and every school district in the state is pulling from S or two in a lot of cases to do this work. So you have a lot of school districts competing for a relatively limited number of mechanical contractors. So that becomes one of the considerations when we talk about timeline. But make no mistake about it, um while we will continue to move forward our plan to remediate these spaces. Like I said, contemporaneously, we will be working with principals to think outside the box to understand what we need to do in order to open in September.
Okay, I guess my next question has to do with um the bank cap. Are we able to use, um not this year, but in the following years? Use bank cap for capital projects? So for example, things like the Washington School retaining wall or some of these HVAC, um you know, continuous HVAC uh work that we need?
Absolutely. I mean, if we wanted to go above, we could, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Flowers. I mean, if we wanted to um, if we wanted to, you know, say, for example, go uh use a million dollars in bank cap and budget that in the general fund for the, for, you know, capital projects or, you know, uh, we could do that, correct?
Yes, it would be a matter of us go, taking two percent cap first. We have throws a budget at two percent and then we're, the allowable adjustment for bank's cap would come into play.
Right, so I'm just looking to the future for that, but um it does seem that we're um needing some more work with HVAC. And I mean, other than the rooms or the units, do we foresee anything else with HVAC? Because I feel like we're, there's a lot already that we address and that we still need to address.
Yeah, so, so let me, you know, just to kind of, you know, while, while what we accomplished between August and, and, you know, and November and, and in an ongoing fashion has been, has been impressive. I mean, we've gotten a lot done. You understand that that work was, was basically s- sort of the, the minimum that we needed to do in order to be able to certify that our, we had adequate ventilation in those spaces. It didn't address other spaces. And we also know that we're, you know, that we're, there, that that referendum had, you know, thirty five million dollars worth of HVAC. So what, you know, what, what did that, what did that account for? Well, it accounted for the replacement of all mechanical systems in the district. Every space would get a modernized uh unit event system. And it might even be, and if we wanted to go the Cadillac plan, it would be a unit event system with heating and air conditioning. Right? So air conditioning for all our spaces, air conditioning for our large spaces, our gyms, our cafeterias. So that's thirty five million dollars to get our HVAC state-of-the-art modernized. Dehumidifying, I mean, all of these things um that would come with a modernized HVAC system. What we're talking about is ensuring that every space has the minimum mechanical ventilation in order for it to be safely occupable. And obviously, we had neither the time or the funds between August and November to get all that work done.
So right now, currently, do we have plans for the, to do work during the summer?
Oh, yes.
And what does that include?
That will include largely um in- installation of mechanical systems in the spaces that do not have them presently. Uh prioritizing instructional spaces.
Then I had another question about transportation. I know that um we did see a savings in the transportation. Because we cut some of the courtesy busting, have our parents and families been notified already of that change for the coming year?
They've been notified, the public's been notified by virtue of the presentation and sharing of the proposed budget and through this presentation itself. If the budget were to pass as such, they would be notified subsequently to the passing of the budget.
Um, I don't have any further questions for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta, and I neglected to acknowledge our um Assistant Business Administrator, Ms. Anna Flores. And thank you so much for being a part of this budget presentation and um I apologize. And Ms. Merklinger.
Thank you. Um, so just a few questions that I have. You know, going through this budget and definitely not an easy, an easy task at all. And I'm someone who takes post-it papers and highlighters and, and questions a lot of the um the ideas and thoughts behind everything. But just in follow-up, so on the bank cap, um I just wanted to be clear. So if we go to two percent, that raises taxes. And then when you add on anything additional, that's an additional tax. So it's not like this is free money that we have that we can spend. It's money that um, it's, it allows you to go above that two percent. So it increases taxes even more to the taxpayer in the community. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um. And one of the items that I noticed that significantly increased, and it definitely caught my attention because everyone knows I'm in the insurance industry. Seeing the, the medical and, I guess, dental health, I think it went up eleven percent. Eleven, thirteen, and nine percent. And I'm just curious why we're seeing such a big increase. I haven't seen something like that in a while. So I'm just curious, did we, what, what occurred there or what transpired there?
Yeah, I, I don't know, Ms. Flowers, if you had any insight to that. I mean, I know that you're right, Ms. Ms. Merklinger, it was significantly larger increase than we saw last year. Last year's increase was really a fraction of that. Did our, our brokers, um, Ms. Flowers, did our brokers have any perspective on that?
The brokers, those are the uh rates that they gave us based on the industry and what they've seen with our experience rating and things of that nature. But they did not um anticipate that we will see. I, I, I don't know what it was last year. I apologize, I don't know what the rate was and how significant of a jump it was um this year compared to last year. But yeah, that is, those are the rates that they gave us to anticipate and budget for, for this upcoming budget.
Ms. Flowers, did you want, I'm sorry, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Merklinger. Ms. Flowers, did you want to just delve slightly into our more recent conversations with our broker relative to self-insurance?
Yes, thank you, uh Dr. Kascun. We did uh speak with our broker. We do have an appointment uh meeting scheduled to speak with them because we are going to explore the idea of going into a self-insured program because based on our numbers, uh, he believes that we would see a significant savings if we were to consider uh going into uh a self-insured program. So that's definitely something we are going to look at as a way for us to save money based uh so that we won't see another rate increase like we're seeing this year.
Okay, maybe I'm not, what, I maybe I wasn't clear. What did the broker give us as the rationale as to why we're seeing such a huge increase? And this is, I mean, I, I live and breathe this every single day and this is kind of, you know, shocking for folks. So I, I guess I'm just questioning what the rationale was behind um what the increase, or what triggered the increase to be this much?
I can speak with him and find out. This was the proposed increase that uh my predecessor had already anticipated. And so when I confirmed these rates, he, we didn't have any changes. But I can definitely set up a meeting to find out where these increases came.
And then with that, um, so speaking of the self-insured plan, um, if we were to, what is the ability to move to that? If, if it were to come back or um during the course of the year, what's our ability to shop around even potentially for a new broker? To do that and, and find a different plan that would um still offer all of our faculty administration the same, you know, it has to be better than our equal to, right, under the contract? So what is, are there time limits on when we can, can we break a contract? Is it a contract that we can break? Is it, um, I'm just curious what, you know, if we were to, if you have this meeting about the self-insured plan, if that were to find savings, how quickly can we move to that? And then um, how does that affect this budget?
At this point, it wouldn't affect, the movement to a self-insured program wouldn't affect this budget because this budget is pretty much a done deal after the public hearing because of the statutory deadlines. And as far as the next steps, I won't really understand the next steps of moving into a self-insured plan until after we've had our meeting with our, our, our broker. But we do have the ability to shop around if we wanted to go with a different broker, say. We do have that ability to do that at any time.
Okay, so I'm saying, so I guess um if we found that self-insured plan was uh better rates, but still offered our faculty administration the same benefits, we could move to it immediately, is that?
I would have to find out the timeline. Yeah, there, there is some, you know, uh transitioning, there's a, a timeline that I don't under, I don't know, I have no knowledge of it until we have our meeting. But as soon as we have our meeting and get all the details as to what that looks like, what the transition looks like, we'll definitely be reporting out to, to the board to let you.
Okay, um, so just kind of peeling off of the, the whole HVAC question that um Melinda asked. So, you know, the governor just announced today that we're increasing basically outdoors is back to normal, restaurants, bars, gyms um are increasing back to normal pretty much. So it sounds like, you know, he's, the governor is following through on, you know, his thoughts that schools are going to be reopened come September. Well, back to, back onsite um with uh no virtual as an option. And, and so I just want to confirm that this budget is with that in mind. I'm, you know, we added in lunch aids to me, which would speak to that we plan to have lunch. So I just wanted to confirm that that is what we're, we're asking or we're expecting this budget to cover. That we're going back to school for the twenty one, twenty two year. Or I guess twenty two, twenty three. That we're going to be moving forward, being onsite uh full-time under this budget. And I only ask because, you know, back in November, we said we could pivot, we could change course, we could do what we needed to do. And we had it and because of, you know, other factors in the community, totally understand why. But we didn't leave our working parents and our, our essential workers much of a choice. So I just want to ensure that this going, and I feel comfortable if I were, you know, we had to vote on this tonight, so I want to make sure I feel comfortable with knowing what the direction of this budget is for.
Yeah, I'll take that. I mean, I, you know, I think, you know, I would just like to reiterate that keeping the budget at one point five percent was the position of the board. The, you know, if we, if we wanted to fund three million dollars of additional HVAC out of the general fund and not out of S or three, then we'd either be looking at a higher percentage or we'd be looking at a significant number of staff cuts. So in terms of what this budget contains, um it contains what it needs while at the same time in alignment with what the board uh indicated they were interested in doing from a tax levy standpoint. It funds the full complement of staff that deliver all the programs which we currently we currently, uh, we currently offer, uh both academic and extracurricular. And it is based upon the fact that we will be onsite. It contains no funding that's dedicated towards exclusively hybrid. That being said, you know, with the technology investment we have, in the event that that had to happen for some reason, we'd be prepared to do that. I think the exercise we've gone through in the last year in pivoting to a virtual model was something we had never done before. Now we have the resources that we would need to do if we had to do that. But I would just like to speak about the governor's political proclamation, even while the state is opening up in other ways. We have still yet to get any kind of concrete guidance from the governor or the Department of Education or the Department of Health or the CDC. And while that might be inconsequential to some people, as the person ultimately responsible for opening the school district, that is of high consequence to me. But yes, um, this is what the governor said. We're optimistic that things will continue to improve. We believe that that will be what we're asked to do. And as such, we're taking the steps we can now in the absence of guidelines to um, to do what we need to do and do the proper planning in order to open in September.
Thank you. And then that's my question. In terms of the uh instructional supplies, I just want our, our community to know. I know we didn't get down to like the nitty-gritty in terms of um instructional supplies, but I just want folks to know that, you know, we're not, students aren't going to be going without.
Yeah, so, you know, basically, the um, the, the determination of the allocations in the instructional supply lines are determined uh by the administration in order uh to ensure that we can uh fund the necessary uh supplies that we need to operate our program. So um in this budget, which I and the administration is forwarded to the board, we are confident that we can fund the programs as outlined in the curriculum uh with the funding allocated in those lines.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. Vice President Tony Cliff.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flowers and Ms. Flores for the presentation. Just a few questions. Just could, and my things are mostly clarifications and just for understanding. Can you just give us an explanation um for the benefit of the community as well? How the shared services programs work and what, how we benefit as a school district from participating in these?
Sure, the shared services. Uh, we participate in different uh co-ops and with ESCs in order to be able to share um a variety of services which will help us to realize savings. And it's, um, the list is extensive because we do want to be able to shop around or, or join uh with different uh other, other organizations or, or schools in order to be able to provide services and participate in programs. But it is that, it helps us to realize some savings.
So we get a better deal because it's part of another conglomerate of schools that are purchasing in larger quantities.
Correct.
Hence reducing the rates of the, whatever we're purchasing through those shared services.
Correct.
Okay, great. And then can you just, I know you, you gave a list of all of the um, the type, the different um title one, the title programs and kind of what they were for in, on page seven during your presentation. Would, could I ask you to just give that to me again? That was really helpful and I don't think I caught them all.
Okay, let me go back for you, sure.
Under those federal and state restricted aids, under the fun, fun twenty, which um.
Right, for title one, the yes, the ESSA that every, uh, every student, six, every student, what is it? The Every Student Succeeds Act, excuse me. Those are the title one funds uh goes towards improving the academic achievement for the disadvantaged.
Okay.
The title two funds, that's where we'll budget professional development for staff.
Okay.
Title three, those funds go towards our English la- language learners programs.
Great.
And then title four funds are used for our character education and safe schools programs.
Okay, safe schools, okay, character education, title four, all right, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And then oh, just, I thought in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, did we really get back? Um, oh, just, I thought in 2018, 19, did we really get back or give back the 3 million? I thought it was only 1.5 million that got given back. No, it was all three? Okay. I misremembered them. Okay, I really think I had one more question, let me see. Sorry. Oh, and could you just elaborate a little bit more on the Alyssa's Law's security compliance and what that'll entail? And which schools are, um, getting, uh, the upgrades and that are going to be, uh, for that program? And what that includes?
Sure, I mean, we could, we could, um, you know, I, I would probably not be the most qualified to give you an in-depth explanation. Mr. Santiago, Mr. Semino or security consultants, but I can give you a little bit of background on this. So, so basically, we, um, we started our security upgrades with the allotment that we received through the COPHS grant, which we, we continue to have a bit left of that to spend also with some local match. Finally, the state after over a year since we submitted, um, our grant application for the Alyssa's Law. We finally, right, Ms. Flowers, just got notification from the county office that the state is moving forward with those funds?
Yes.
Right, so, um, up to this point, some of the upgrades that have been, um, installed have been the replacement of older doors with, um, security grade doors, ballistic film. This final piece is every school, um, will receive, um, a, a man trap that, you know, has, um, video access. Every school have a, a security, a visitor management system, sort of like the one we have at the central office and that's installed in several of the schools. All schools will have that. Um, and all schools will be equipped with a centralized alarm system or, um, you know, kind of, um, I don't know if that's what I'm, if I'm calling it the right thing. Basically, uh, you know, where you can alert the school, um, that there is a, basically, uh, Ms. Flowers.
The panic button.
Panic button, that's the word I'm looking for, yeah. So all, all the schools will then be equipped with visitor management systems, fully functional man traps as well as the, the panic button. Um, and that will be, that work should be completed over the summer as well.
Oh, great, okay. And then, um, can you just also on the budget and staffing additions on page 19? Can you just let us know where each of those new positions are going in which schools?
I, you know what, I, I, I can probably give you, I don't know off the top of my head where all this, the special ed position. The occupational therapist is, uh, Ms. Flowers, actually, I can pull up the presentation here. The occupational therapist is district, the BD program is going to be based at Liberty School. Uh, the LLD, um, kindergarten teacher, is it Kelly? The autism program. I don't recall where that one's going. Grade five teacher is Hazel, the interventionists are Edison and Liberty. Roosevelt already has math and language arts, Liberty's getting language arts. And I don't recall offhand where the special education reform teacher is going. But I can probably get that information for you.
Great, great, I would be appreciative, thank you. And then, I know we're talking about roof replacements. A number of years ago, there were, um, a couple of boards before had talked about doing, um, solar panels when we redid the roofs and that there was some possible savings that we could get from, that companies would pay to put in the, and install the, the, uh, solar panels and that we could then get some sort of discount on energy savings. And I'm wondering if we've looked into that at all.
Right, so, you know, when you, when you talk about doing those, those projects, those, you, you're talking about doing those kind of simultaneously with a full roof install. And so, um, in these particular cases, um, these are just sections of roofs. That could be something we consider, um, you know, if, if the board moved forward with a larger referendum and we're looking at doing full roof replacements, it might make sense at that time to look at possibly a solar project to be installed contemporaneously. But what you would not want to do is install a solar project in a roof that had been sort of patched in sections, because you might ultimately have to pull those, those solar panel brackets up to redo the roof. So, and these particular roofs would not be candidates for that because they're just smaller sections of an existing roof.
And then how long will those, um, fixes last?
They're usually good for about 20 years.
Oh, okay. Great. And I think that wraps up the questions I had. Thank you, President Triggs Gels.
Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff and Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you very much. Again, just want to thank, uh, Mrs. Flowers, Mrs. Flores, Dr. Cascone for putting all of this together for us. You know, first I just wanted to note that, uh, the bottom lines here are unchanged from the preliminary budget. I know there was shifting around, we have fewer positions lost, which is amazing. We have more cuts in other areas, which I'm glad you were able to find those opportunities. But we're dealing with the reality here and, um, part of that reality is the board asked the administration to stay to a 1.5% increase, not larger than that. I know that Dr. Cascone and Mrs. Flowers would have had, uh, much more time on their hands and, and shorter work hours had we been willing to go to a 2% tax increase and would have made your jobs a lot easier had we said that we were comfortable with a 2% tax increase plus utilizing some of the bank cap that was available to us. We could have funded everything and more and, and locked this up. But we all had a very strong sense that this was not the year for that kind of tax increase. And, um, I really can't speak for everyone, but, but I know that we were all concerned. I know that many of us were concerned about the, the condition of so many in our community. And trying to find a way to say, on the one hand, increased taxes hurt people who are suffering in this year of pandemics and lost jobs and any number of issues they're struggling with. At the same time, cut services at the school level have an entirely different level of impact on the population. And how do you balance that? Where is the right place to hurt our community? Is, um, I, I've said it before and I'll say it again, these are truly, it, it feels unwinnable a lot of the time and leads to a scenario where you've got to compromise and hold your nose and do the best you can in order to maintain the quality of the schools, the services that we're providing to our students and our community, and at the same time, just try to minimize the hurt. The, uh, I, I think some in our, in our community have put it as the insult of, of raised taxes year after year, which, you know, again, I think we all understand. I know I'm not asking questions and making statements here, bear with me for a moment. I'm looking at page, page 12 in the presentation, which is the, the chart that lists out all of the different years and the, and the tax levy increases year over year. And I made an observation in the, in the last budget meeting that the increases go up and down year after year after year. But over the time that we're looking at here, basically, we're looking at a 2% increase each year and, which is the maximum that we're allowed. And it occurs to me that I think that this is a reasonable statement and, and maybe you could let me know if your, if your opinions support this, that at our current staffing, with the current offerings that we have in our school system and with the understanding of the salary increases and the benefits increases that we face every year, we need at least 2% increases each year just in order to keep pace and pay our bills. Is that generally an accurate statement?
That's, that is generally how the vast majority of districts in the state operate, yes.
And I, and I know that even that's probably a little bit optimistic because those 2% increases have also included year after year cuts that are made in staffing and cuts that are made in certain aspects of program, programming and, and supplies. And, and to put it as a question, it feels to me like what we're eventually driving toward is a point at which we can't even continue to offer what it is that we've been offering, um, at that 2% increase every year. Is, is that a valid statement as well?
Yes.
And so, what that leads me to think as I'm looking at, as, as I'm looking at this budget at the whole and really struggling with the issues that, that we're facing in the school district is in order to have significant changes in the levels of taxation, by that I mean to lower the levels of taxation, we have to significantly modify or change what it is that we're offering to our students in our community. You know, again, I ask you to, does that, is that accurate?
Yes, and just to add a little bit more context to that, um, is, you know, when you, when you look at the, and, and listen, I'm not, I'm not, let me preface by saying, Mr. Rothstein, I'm not minimizing any increase in taxes. But when you look at, you know, if, if we had moved forward with a 0% budget, that the average monthly increase would have been $10 and at 1.5, it was 15. So, but when you, when you think about what going down to 0% would have done, so again, it's not my place to say where that, where that balance lies, but I can tell you every year we go under 2% and ultimately don't dip into bank cap. The situation compounds.
Gets worse, yeah, compounds worse. And when you say that the increase would have been $10 at 0%, that might be puzzling to some people, but I think that goes back to what Mrs. Flowers explained, uh, that part of the budget increase for this year comes from, you know, the January through June part of the budget.
Correct.
Yeah, so eventually, you know, if we did a couple of years in a row of 0%, that would actually come to a 0% increase. But then we have to consider what does that mean for our schools? How many years in a row can you cut 20 or 30 or 40 members of the staff and still offer the same level of service that we're giving to our students? So, a- at some point, I think that we as a community need to grapple with the fact that, that what we're offering is very expensive and very difficult to control and that we either need to deal with that and accept it or we need to consider significant changes to our programming in the future, which is really, uh, you know, such a challenging and difficult thing to comprehend because, look, anybody who's been on meetings and the, you know, the last couple of board meetings knows that there's not a lot of appetite among people who, who have called into the meetings for cutting staff. Everybody's in favor of it in a general sense. When it comes down to the teachers and the educators and the staff members who have had a positive impact on your child's life, that's a completely different scenario and nobody wants to see that person cut. And that includes all of us, nobody in the administration or the board wants to see those cuts. But we're trying again to figure out a way to make these balances. And, uh, and then there's the programs, you know, for, not just the staffing, but the programs. If we were to take entire programs that we offer and decide that we could save a significant amount of money by, by removing those, that again puts us in a scenario where these are programs that make a huge difference in the lives of so many of our students and so many of our families and our community and the way we feel about our community and our schools and the, and the property values. None of which is to say that I have any idea at the moment what's the right solution or what's the right decision. But all of which is to say, I believe, and Dr. Cascone, I think you've said this before, we're heading for a reckoning. And the reckoning is going to be painful and distasteful no matter which direction it goes. Uh, the, the current model doesn't appear to be sustainable. There's no Deus ex machina, there's no like, the state isn't going to step in and say, you know, here's, you know, a gazillion dollars and do with it whatever you want. That's just not going to happen. And, uh,
Mr. Rothstein, in fact, it did happen this year. You know, it, it, it did actually, I mean, it did actually happen with S or one, two, three. I mean, these grants were like Dos Ex Machina, I mean, and, and without them, you know, and in future years, we might not have the benefit of that. Could be a real problem.
Absolutely, and, and you're right, yeah, good point and thank you for bringing that up, but, you know, the, the, the best I can think at the moment is that, um, even though we start early, you mentioned the December, town hall on, on the budget that we did, uh, last year, last December. And unfortunately, it wasn't very well attended, although I remember there were some really poignant and important comments made by some of the members of the community who did attend. I just keep coming back to, it's not too, i- i- it can't be too early for people to start voicing their opinions about what they value in our school district. Whether it's, I value everything, don't cut anything, or whether it's, there are a number of things I don't value and I would be okay with cutting this or that. You got to share those opinions with us because, uh, th- this decision is coming down the road. I really believe that it is and I, I don't know if it's next year, I don't know if it's the year after that, but this decision is coming soon. And, uh, and I would hope the decisions were made based on what is best for the students in the community. Sometimes these decisions are made based on the constituency that is the loudest and applies the most pressure. And, uh, it's, it's time for everyone to start thinking about that now and, uh, and preparing for what that's going to look like. Apologies for the, uh, for the darkness in that comment, but I, I'm proud that this budget will keep our schools running and effectively serving our students, uh, in the coming year. Um, I'm glad that as a, as a board and as an administration, we work together to keep the rates low. I think that was important this year. Um, I'm still not happy with the results and I doubt any of us is sleeping easy with, uh, with it. But, um, again, I just want to thank, uh, to thank all of you for your hard work on this, to getting us to this, uh, to this compromised budget. And I will stop where I'm standing with the microphone, with the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein, and I just want to thank all of my fellow board members, um, all of your comments. Very well said and taken. Um, I'm not going to take up a lot of time because we do have, um, folks waiting to speak, but there are a couple of things that I wanted to, to share. We've been living between a rock and a hard place, um, for a while now. When we were gung ho about, um, we're going to keep taxes, the tax increase as low as possible, out of our sensitivity and empathy for the financial straits that some of our fellow citizens and residents, um, were living in. We were sort of looking at the forest, um, 1.5, this is what we want to do. The community brought to our attention that there are trees in that forest. And what we had to do was to step back and kind of take a look at cause and effect. The cuts that we were anticipating, what was the effect? And I think that we've all learned from this experience that as we move forward in building budgets, we must ask ourselves, um, what is the impact? What's the impact of these decisions? And I think that we're going to be, uh, much stronger, um, in our deliberation. But I, I just want the public to know that this has not been easy. I don't know how it looks from the outside, but trust me, uh, from the inside, the hours, um, that we have devoted, the research, um, the questions that we've asked, Dr. Cascone and his staff, um, what they've been able to provide for us. You can tell from some of the questions tonight that we are a questioning board, we are not just an accepting board. We do ask questions, we want to know if there are alternate ways to, to arrive at the, at the same decision at the same point. And then I want to talk about the elimination of the, um, Position Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion. I for one, and I know that there were other board members who were extremely excited about the prospect of being able to, put a position in the district that would be able to coordinate all of the services, all of the loose ends that exist in trying to move our district forward so that every student gets what he or she needs. Being able to not just Being able to not just make statements that we are diverse, but that we celebrate our diversity, we appreciate it. And so I'm really sorry that we were not able to fill this position this year. But I just want to make sure that the community knows that because we don't have a person doing the work, the work must be done. And Dr. Cascon has made that commitment. And I just wanted to make sure that the community knows that we're not pushing the work aside, we're not eliminating the need. We simply will have to find other ways to get the work done. And Dr. Cascon, you know, we keep talking about this $8 million that's out there somewhere that we hope shows up one day. And if we are able to, with this, with this American Rescue Act money, find a way to hire consultants or whatever the administration deems possible, I hope that that is a priority for that funding. Alrighty, and we are now going to take questions from the public on agenda items. And Ms. Graffteza, I know, will give us some additional information, but we would ask that everyone please adhere to the three minutes so that we have an opportunity to hear from everyone who wants to speak. Thank you, Ms. Graffteza.
Thank you. Yes, if you would like to speak now for agenda items only, it is the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. If you are one of our call-in patrons, it is star nine, and you just have to dial it once and you will hear the prompt come up on your screen. And then you'll hear me when it's time to prompt you. We will ask you for your name and address for the record. So at this time, Deb Cohen, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Deb Cohen, I teach at the high school. I understand that taxes are high in West Orange, and this year has been rough. However, as a former Board of Ed member and a current town council member where I live, I'm confused as to why that large amount of bank cap would be let go while making cuts to some staff, admittedly fewer than originally said, as well as instructional supplies. Does not make sense. I'm not sure even if the right one of the two administrators that was cut was correct. Would going up to even 2% tax allow some of that to be restored? Going out for a bond that would include things like the retaining wall at Washington that may be voted down and the money has to be found when there is bank cap, doesn't make sense. Either way, the taxes go up for the taxpayer, so I'm not sure what the benefit is. Maybe I'm not understanding something. A 20% cut in instructional supplies does have an impact, especially for those of us with consumables, more sharing of things, less individual work, possibly changing projects to save money. In addition, teachers who have always spent money are now increasing what we spend out of pocket to ensure our already tight budgets given to us by the schools can go further. As both Mr. Rothstein, Rothstein, sorry, and Dr. Cascon stated, by not going to cap, we are creating a problem that compounds each year. We are making decisions that will take the programs offered pre-K to 12, eventually have to be looked at, and some cut. Staff, teachers, program supplies, they can't be gotten back. The West Orange School District is well-known for all of its programs, and if we lose them, that has the potential to affect property values of the West Orange residents of the schools. Because schools will not be as attractive as we don't have the wide range program. What will go first? Electives, athletics, extracurriculars, courses that keep our students coming to school when they aren't self-motivated, our special education programs, including our autistic and self-contained students, our entire, or entire departments, because students can get that elsewhere. Never mind the families that can't pay for those extras. School is where some students discover and find their passions. We have been on the front lines for these students, those that have gotten sick themselves, had family members get sick, lost loved ones, those that have lost jobs, those students that are working full-time jobs to help support their family. I get it, it's been rough, and we feel for all these families. I've had kids cry with me. I've done Zooms at all hours to try and help them. Again, I sympathize with what I am sure were prolonged discussions of the Board of Ed. The community members in town, who like all of us have had trials and tribulations above and beyond this year, more than most years. But we should not and cannot make decisions that will have long-term effects on the schools, the programs, and most importantly, the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Britton. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Lisa Britton. I am from 71 Burnett Terrace. So I would really like to thank our board president, the board members, Dr. Cascon, and our school principals for their thoughtful stewardship through these unprecedented times. The world has been through, and we are still going through, an incredibly challenging time. And the situation has been full of unknowns, complicated, and with fluid, constantly shifting parameters. And I, I thank you for your considered and measured way in which you've tried to balance the multiple needs and demands of our students, teachers, families, our whole community. My junior has flourished in the remote learning environment created by our school district. And our teachers have been generous with their time and energy as they navigate through a fusion of in-person and remote teaching, shifting schedules, closures, closures and reopenings. I realize that parents with young children face different challenges. And that it is difficult to juggle work and keep kids on track while they school at home. But I have to say, I'm quite shocked at the vitriol and hostility expressed towards the Board of Education. Until today, children under 16 are not, have not been safe from the virus. I just learned that the Pfizer vaccine has now been authorized for children between the ages of 12 to 15. But until a vaccine is approved for those under 12, I support the caution and the respect for human life exhibited by our Board of Education and our educators. And I urge patience. It's better to err on the side of caution than to rush headlong into dis- and disregard our children's lives. The lives of our community and our children are paramount. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Adam Kramer. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Road, West Orange. I'm going to advocate for the taxpayers. Congratulations, you have the highest tax levy in the county by far for schools. Go to, go to the county tax board, take a look. They're 2.65% of assessed. Glen Ridge isn't even close in second, they're only two. I've looked around the state, I've looked at other, even the nation, I couldn't find a higher tax levy anywhere. The tax levy is such that in average household making, in this town, which median income is $106,000, will pay nine, almost $9,000 in school taxes, or about 1/12. Add in the county and, and, and the town, you're looking at about 1/7th to 1/8th of an average, of an average household's income, living in an average house median, excuse me, going to taxes. That's insane. I've compared you to most of the other demographically similar GH groups with over 1,100 employees for under 6,800 students. Your ratio of employees to student is higher than most in the GH, their costs are higher. I look at these other districts, they're also doing a good job. They also send kids to college. They also have sports, they also have academic success. We are spending more, I can't per se, we're getting more for that spending, but you're certainly spending more. That's just a fact. You gotta do things differently. As Mr. Rothstein said, you have to make hard choices. My heart suggestion is make those hard choices now, because if you procrastinate, it's going to get more ugly. I'm not saying it's easy, I'm not saying it's fun. I'm not saying that, you know, education is unimportant and shouldn't be funding. But you just can't do this. Because what are you going to do? You're going to raise it 5% every year? We're going to get to a point where, you know, a family puts a ninth, 10th, a, a, a fifth of their money to taxes, property taxes every year? That's just insane. We've got to have some balance here, and we gotta make some hard choices and help the taxpayer out. With regard to what's been said about opening, all I could say is, my kids go to parochial school. They've been there since August, there's been no mass outbreaks. Education has gone on quite well, actually at a lower cost per student than here. So I don't know why you're not open. I'm still nixed by that. Thank you for hearing me out.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Denise Guanlao. Pardon my pronunciation. If you give us your name and address for the record and hit the prompt on your screen first.
Hi, Denise Guanlao, 9 Markus Street. Good evening, everyone. While I regrettably admit that I did not pay close enough attention to the board's invitation to the budget hearing that took place in March, and therefore missed my opportunity to provide essential feedback. And while I was in full support of keeping St. Cloud's librarian on staff, and still am, I would ask that the board continue to revisit and make a priority, the need for the now dissolved position of Director of Diversity. I am pleased that Dr. Cascon and Mr. Price and staff have personally shown their support to St. Cloud's parent-led Diversity Council, and subsequently our first-ever, also parent-initiated Black Lives Matter at School Week, and still to come, again, also parent-initiated Stop AAPI Hate Programming next week. However, we must continue with this momentum and strive towards bringing about actual relative leadership so that initiatives such as St. Cloud's aren't far and few between, but instead become the district-wide norm. I am thrilled to be in the company of like-minded parents that wish to bring about change so that their children are reading about the atrocities that continuously take place in our world instead of living through them. But we are parents that would love to be volunteers on committees led by district personnel instead. As always, I thank you for all of the hard work that you are doing to ensure as best as possible of a learning experience for our children. But we need to continue to make sure that our Black and Brown communities are made a priority. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Robin Iserlis. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Robin Iserlis, 22 Yale Terrace. Thank you, everyone, for an informative discussion about the budget. This, I've heard, I heard the other conversations as well. Over the last six years, as a co-founder of West Orange Cares About Schools, I've attended a great many board meetings, some that have reached into the wee hours of the night. At times, I've been firmly opposed to Board of Ed decisions and shared my criticisms and concerns. Certainly, our community has been tested before, most recently when we had a superintendent who was hired and renewed despite great opposition by the community. For those relatively new to the district who are listening on, there were some dark days in the recent past, and that was without a global pandemic. Despite all that you have endured this year and the improbability of decisions, protocols, and plans that would have responded to the multiplicity of needs and situations unique to our district. Amid so much uncertainty, it is easy to forget that there have been great efforts at moving our district forward. I'll start with the budget, which was clearly mindful and intentional, as we just heard. Personally, I would have rathered the budget be increased, increased by the permitted 2%. And I commend Mr. Rothstein for challenging our entire community to consider what's at stake in the coming years. That said, I think the entire way we fund public schools is incredibly problematic, but beyond the control of any one board. Looking over the agendas of the past year, the Board of Ed has been doing an impressive number of initiatives during a pandemic, and that should be acknowledged. And with gratitude. The district closed a pre-existing digital divide with hotspots and Chromebooks to facilitate the remote work. They set up a separate, the Board of Ed set up their own food bank and worked with local partners to address food insecurity of our district members. We entered into a partnership with Rutgers University to support and encourage participation of our multilingual parent and guardian community. And of course, the work of the Committee on Diversity Equity and Inclusion has continued, including a partnership with Dr. Akil Kalfani of Essex County College to guide our district through a more robust integration of the Amistad curriculum. I am hopeful too, as President Trigscall said, that the diversity, equity, inclusion work that has begun continues. In terms of the safe return to schools, early on, in-person small group instruction for identified students in need was implemented. There was great effort made to improve upon the ventilation systems. Extracurricular opportunities for students that were safe performing arts, athletics, and school clubs were the important outlets for our students' mental health and well-being. And last week, I attended a great Zoom event sponsored by Seton Hall University and the South Orange Maplewood Coalition on Race, all about racial equity in education. I was exceedingly proud of two of our Board of Ed leaders were in attendance, President Trigscall's and Vice President Tunncliff. And our town council president, Cindy Matu Brown, was also there. They took time to join yet another meeting in a neighboring town to learn and to bring back ideas to our district. So while I often share concerns, tonight I actually share some gratitude for the amazing amount of time, energy, patience, compassion, and leadership that has been on display during this very challenging year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Redwine. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, it's Elizabeth Redwine, and I'm sorry, I have teenagers who are, guys, I'm speaking, okay? I'm from, I'm speaking from 10 Cobain Terrace. And I, I wish I had things as organized as, as Ms. Iserlis, but I'm echoing her comments. And I was so proud to see Ms. Trigscall's and Ms. Tunncliff and Ms. Council President Matu Brown at that discussion of education in the Coalition on, on Race in South Orange Maplewood on Zoom last week with Seton Hall University, and I had colleagues just really impressed by their attending that really important discussion. But most of all, I just want to thank sincerely Ms. Trigscall's leadership and Dr. Cascon and the rest of the board for their work during a time that I just can't imagine. The countless hours, like when I stop and think about the hours this board has had to spend shepherding us through this difficult time, and of course, no one has agreed on everything. You know, but the, the way that Ms. Trigscall's leadership and Dr. Cascon's leadership has kept the tenor of discussion to be so helpful and moving forward rather than getting involved in arguments that aren't useful, but focusing instead on finding solutions for our community and for our students and teachers and staff and administrators and coaches. So I'm just incredibly grateful, and I've been thinking about this a lot, as we sort of come to the place where hopefully we're moving into an easier time, I hope. So I'm, I'm just very grateful, and you know, I, I feel like as we're coming out of this time, it's, it's important to say that, and I just want to acknowledge the time, the intense amount of time that I know this board has spent during this, this difficult period. And then just finally, I know I say this a lot, but it bears repeating, I have four students. You can probably hear them in the background in the school system. And I think that's about 28 or 30 faculty members and counselors who work with my children, and they have just been incredible this past year, especially in times when I've been, you know, struggling to help my kids, they've really helped pull me through. So just, just a note of gratitude. So thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Betsy Stevens. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Betsy Stevens. I'm at Beaumont Terrace in West Orange. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I couldn't tell because the timer wasn't moving.
I usually wait till after the person says their address.
Okay, alright, so I just wanted to, also echoing what Ms. Redwine said, I would like to thank the board and Dr. Cascon for your leadership during this time, which I do feel like we are coming out of now. I actually work at another school district that has done things a little differently. And I feel like there have been a lot of bumps in the road that we haven't had in West Orange, so I'm really grateful to you guys for your leadership and for taking things at the pace that you have taken them at. I found it, I found it very helpful. I have two students in my house, and they're both very different. I have two students in my house, and they're both very different in general, but also in the way they've reacted to this last couple of year and the events of the, and this last year and the events of the last year. And I feel like they have both been served well. So I want to thank everyone for all the hard work that you've put into making things be as good as they possibly could throughout this time. And that's all.
Hey, thank you. Okay, next, we have Nicole Ruffo. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, hello, Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. I'm calling also to express my gratitude especially for Teacher Appreciation Week. I think this should be Teacher Appreciation Year for what has gone on in our district. It's incredible to see what our teachers have done, how they have reached our students from the beginning, over computers, over Google Classroom, and communicating with parents and students at all hours of the day, I'm sure. I have four students in the district, and two have gone back the last couple of weeks, and it's been incredible for them to be in person, to have decided to stay remote, and all four are still being educated in an incredible manner. And I just, as a former teacher and having many friends who are teachers, I know what the teachers have gone through all over America this year. And again, as you know, Betsy Stevens just mentioned, our district really has done an incredible approach to the return to school, a very measured approach in thinking about the teachers and the staff. And as President Trigscall said Friday night when she was addressing in the meeting that, you know, it was about the health of the students and the staff. And I so appreciate that that's been on the top of the list because I have friends who are teaching in districts, like Ms. Stevens said, that were handled very differently, and the teachers are traumatized. And I personally don't want my students learning from traumatized teachers. I think the teachers in West Orange probably would say that they've had a very stressful year, but they were not teaching in person until February, which is very different than some of the other districts. And the other districts have not gone smoothly. They didn't quarantine after spring breaks. They have a lot of issues with spacing in classrooms that are still not able to be used. So I'm just so grateful for Dr. Cascone and President Trigscall's and the board for all that you have done, and of course, the teachers. I also attended the event last week that Robin Isurlis and Elizabeth Redwine mentioned from the Coalition on Race in South Orange Maplewood, and it was incredible to have two Board of Ed members on that call and participate in that conversation, and also a town council member. So the conversation and the, the book about Black Lives Matter in schools, this is another thing that I'm so grateful for, is we've had people coming to the Board of Ed meeting asking for Black Lives Matter Week to be observed in our schools, and for the first time, I saw that it was observed in my students' and my children's classroom this year, and I can't wait to see what is done. And also to echo President Trigscall's, I really hope that that position of diversity, equity, and inclusion is, you know, able to be put back at some point. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Laura Lab. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Laura Lab, 35 Cunningham Drive, West Orange. I had a concern about the, if the budget passes, the hazardous routes or the courtesy busing that's going to be cut, and which schools would be affected? Will it also encumber the hazardous routes that have already been designated? You know, the parents rely on, and I understand, of course, that notification has not gone out because it's pending on approval of this budget. That is one concern. Another is Dr. Cascone had touted the success of the grants for the last two years. However, this budget is cutting the grant writer who is responsible for those grants for the last two years. As the district sought efficiencies and since the pandemic began, I'm curious if West Orange, similar to many neighboring districts, approved stipends with the caveat if the state suspended, restricted, or prohibited the activity. Were those stipends prorata or rescinded? We spent, at least when I was on the board, a million dollars a semester for stipends. So looking that you're saving $450,000 in busing costs, I'm just curious, what was the savings, if any, for the activities for the stipends that did not take place during the pandemic? And I really don't agree with Mr. Kramer many, many times, but according to the 2020 Taxpayer Guide for Education Spending, West Orange is now at the highest in Essex County. That's disturbing. It's over $20,000 now per student. And you have $21 million in state aid. I left it $8 million four years ago, so it's just kind of mind-boggling the differences, and obviously you have so many different concerns than years have passed. But still, I guess, just again, my biggest concern right now is those kids who are going to lose their busing, whether it's the courtesy busing after school, how do they get back from their activities? Or is it the kids who need the bus to get to a school because they've been provided the bus for years? That's it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, next is one of our call-in patrons, last digits 5705. You're gonna see something pop up on your phone. If you could follow the prompt and unmute, and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. It's Jeremiah Salinas, 7 Crystal Ave. First of all, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all the teachers in our district and everybody that works with our kids in our schools, all the educational support professionals that we have. What, what, what I'm glad to see with this budget is a serious approach to the infrastructure of our schools, so something that hasn't been taken, hasn't been given the priority that it needs to be given. The pandemic has only made more vivid some of the issues that our district has had, has continued to, to, to have, and, and some of the things that have been let go on for a while. I'm glad that we're taking a serious look again at the air quality of our buildings. I am glad that there is money that is being spent in making sure that all our buildings are safe for our children and for every single adult that works in, in, in these buildings. What, what I want to also say is that our staff, we spoke about the, the amount of money that's spent on staff and the amount of money that's spent on insurance and benefits. The state health benefit plan is actually more cost, or costs more than what some insurance providers are offering at the moment, and some insurance providers are actually taking advantage of that by, you know, making it more difficult for some school districts to be able to have something that's affordable to them. So these are things that we have to look at. When we look at what the budget looks like and how much we have to pay as taxpayers, we also have to make, you know, understand and make sure that we know that this is not a unilateral decision. The Board of Ed shouldn't work in a silo. The Board of Ed needs to work in conjunction with town administration to make sure that we have more housing available and that tax rebates are not being given left and right in certain areas because it will increase our taxes. I completely agree with Mr. Rothstein when he says that at some point, we're just not going to be able to afford it. And the reason why we're not going to be able to afford it is because we're not generating enough money. Everything is going to continue to increase. Services are unfortunately going to have to be cut at some point, but I think this is something that we, we need to start looking at right now rather than, than later and, and, and start looking at every single offering that a district has. Start seeing where our priorities should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swyns.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, if there is anyone else who would like to speak, now is the time to push the Raise Your Hand button located at the bottom of your screen, or if you're another one of our call-in patrons, it is star nine. Okay, Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. Hi, Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. First of all, thank you to the teachers. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to the board and the superintendent and administration. I, I know you work hard on this budget, but I do have a few questions, some are follow-ups to previous meetings. The COPS grant you received was over $300,000. Why wasn't this used for the mantraps? How much was the Alyssa Law funds? There was also funding received from the 2016 ballots. How much was those funds, were those funds? During Mr. Mendez's tenure as interim super, she explained that we weren't doing the mantraps and had no need for it. In this budget, although you reinstated some positions and changed your mind on some of the administrative positions, I continue to question the hiring of an Assistant Director of Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Siggy did that job by himself for over 10 years. I, I don't know why you'd hire another administrator. The transportation routing specialist, we've never needed one before, and the busing is outsourced for 5,000 students. This year, you gave them a 17% or I think it's 18% increase. I, I, I just don't understand why any spending was done this year other than to get the buildings ready for, you know, safety as it relates to COVID. What else? The total state aid this year is $21.9 million. You've received money from the ESSA grants. I, I, I can't, I still don't understand why you would spend 1.4 million of that for technology when normally technology is spread across a three- to five-year period. I didn't hear anything in this budget about the Cures Act funding for 2021. I know last year's Cures Act funding was $787,000. You also received 500,000 grant funds for summer programs, including Title III grant funding. That's not reflected in this budget either. I, I just want to know why this budget wasn't broken down as regards to how much you received for, for funding for each category, including grants. Thank you, Ms. Tunncliff, for mentioning solar panels. I was championing back in that, back in 2010, so I'm glad to see that there may be some support for it this time. And finally, yes, I agree with others who spoke. The Coalition on Race presentation last week was very enlightening, and he is a great, a great teacher and author, and I'm looking forward to hearing more from him. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is just listed as iPhone. So if the person who has the prompt on their screen can follow it and give us your name and address for the record, please. It's not an actual, it's, it would be on the computer itself, not sure why it's, or you're just on the meeting on your phone, but not a call-in person. So if you have raised your hand, if you can just check a prompt on your screen that's asking you to unmute. Send the prompt one more time. A person who has raised their hand, who is waiting in the queue, has the prompt on their screen? Okay, if there's anyone else at this time who would like to speak, if you can raise your hand now, please. I'm gonna send the prompt one more time to the person on the iPhone who's following the meeting, who pushed, maybe accidentally pushed the button. There's a prompt on your screen? Okay, we cannot make contact with that person, and that was the last person with their hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Grupteza, and thank you to all of the members of the public for their comments and questions. And so, Dr. Cascone, would you like to begin with some of the responses?
Sure. Not too many questions tonight. I just, and I, you know, argue that perhaps Ms. Cohen's feedback might be better addressed by the board, and then, of course, we had a number of folks who came to lend some positive comments. Appreciate that. Never a bad thing. So thank you for that. And so just to first address some questions about, from Ms. Lab, about the hazardous routes, you know, without having detailed information in front of me relative to, down to the route level, you know, what I can say is that it will impact students in grades, grades six through 12. And Ms. Flowers, do you, do you have any additional texture on that one that you could share? We're basically using the statutory mileage guideline as, as the benchmark, correct?
That's correct. So it'll be two miles for the elementary students, or excuse me, middle school, and two and a half miles for high school students.
Okay. So anyone that's typically, that falls within that radius that is afforded busing presently would not under the, under the cut?
Correct.
Okay. Relative to the stipend piece, so that was more relevant last year than it was this year. This year, you know, for many of our extracurricular activities, our club and activity advisors, they've, they've been approved in those positions, and they have been, in some cases, you know, serving in that advisorship exclusively virtually. In some cases, we've had advisors serve, you know, in some onsite capacities and virtual. And then, of course, you know, when it's, when it's come to our, our athletic stipends, I mean, those programs have been, have been in place, you know, throughout the year since, you know, since midsummer. I can tell you that we did explore, you know, because there were, there, last year, and I changed this practice this year, we approved all the coaches in one fell swoop for all seasons. We did stop doing that this year, not understanding what, you know, what the winter would like, what the spring would look like. We started approving coaches by season, so it gave us a little bit of flexibility to understand whether or not we should move forward with those approvals. We did hold off on the winter approvals as late as possible, and we did engage in some conversation with the local Teachers Association to see if they would be interested in entering into a sidebar with us where we would put some sort of a conditional clause within the approval motion. While that was done in some districts, we were not able to effectively broker that agreement here in West Orange, and therefore, you know, moved forward with the stipends. But I'm happy to say that every staff member, excuse me, who's been, who's been approved for a stipend has been serving in that capacity over the course of the year. And of course, we will put in place our usual, particularly for clubs and activities, because obviously the, the fruits, if you will, of, of the labors of athletics is just more readily apparent by virtue of the fact that they've been onsite. So we will do our usual kind of audit process at the end of the year whereby we ask for information from the club and activity advisors relative to the number of students that have been in the club, meetings, activities, and end-of-year reports so that we can determine if that's a club that's sustainable moving forward. Ms. Mordecai, you'll have to forgive me. You asked a lot of questions, which is great. Love them. I, Ms. Flowers, takes really good notes. I take mediocre notes, but we will have the transcript of the, that's why she's the board secretary. And is, but, but we do have the, we will have the video recording of, of the meeting, and so if I miss any of the questions, of course, Ms. Trigscall's is very good also around me when I haven't, but, but there may be questions here where I'm not equipped to answer them tonight, but I will do my best with, with what I've, what I've heard. So the COPS grant is a grant, you know, that we were awarded basically when I first arrived in district. You know, it came online, I think, that July, and we've had the, the two, I believe, three years within which to spend those funds. A good portion of those funds have already been spent. Ms. Flores would probably have that figure. I think all that remains of that funding is $70,000, $80,000, maybe?
About $90,000.
$90,000. And of course, with that, we still have a comparable local match of about the same. Ninety thousand dollars. And of course, with that, we still have a comparable local match of about the same. Or is it less? About the local match of the same. So that's being used to just partially subsidize any shortfalls in funding. You know, I can't speak to, you know, comments that may have been made previously by Mr. Mendez. You know, some of our schools entryways require less retrofitting than others. Some really need maybe some additional contracting work, like, for example, Mount Pleasant, they actually need to, I do believe, do some remodeling in that space. But I can say publicly that it is our intention that every school have a functioning man trap, properly functioning man trap, along with a visitor ID system. The, there were some nuanced questions there about funding Alyssa's law. I'm going to want to go back and listen to that question to properly answer it. The, the trend, the assistant director of buildings and grounds. So I think it's important for this one to realize, and I do believe I've responded to this question previously, is that the, this position has always existed, but it's been called something different. So the previous title for this position was the operations foreman. Mr. ZG always had a basically a number two. That individual was Mr. Hanley. He was the operations foreman for a long time. We simply renamed the job title, made it an assistant director of buildings and grounds. But the job description is almost identical to what it was under the operations foreman, as is the compensation is, is comparable to what it was. So the, how much was the grant Alyssa grant amount? Do we have Ms. Flores or Ms. Flowers? Do we have that, that information? Not at your fingertips? Okay, we can certainly get that. Transportation Department, right. So yet last year's budget, we, we cut an administrative assistant from that department. Now, what I didn't realize at the time of that cut was the role that that, that administrative assistant played, which was she, she had she had routing responsibilities. Well, she assisted the director of transportation with the routing. So you know, we had some, some, some transition over the course of that department. So we ultimately added that position back and we're looking for somebody with routing responsibilities. And that came directly from, you know, from the director that she was needed. There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of flux in that department. We regrettably had a one of our, one of the administrative assistants who was on long term leave passed away. There's been a lot of moving parts in that department from a personnel standpoint. And so ultimately, we felt that it was important to, to bring some stability and some additional support. You know, to help manage that. And of course, this year has been, that's been an important piece because there's been a lot of moving parts as it comes to transportation. Why are we spending one point three million dollars in technology? A good portion of that is dedicated to, you know, to the, the refreshing of several thousand Chromebook devices. And that's not all that is. There are other expenses in the technology from the technology department that we moved out of the general fund and into the grant. And that was really a cost savings piece so that we, you know, we did not have to fund those things out of the local fund. So it ended up creating an efficiency whereby we had to do less cutting in the general fund. And there's another question in the chat here. Why did we spend any amount in transportation? That was, yeah, that was relative to the, the staffing piece. The, the, the CARES Act, you know, that's, you know, S R. Currently, we're in the process of filing for S R two. And we understand that there's another, there's another round of funding, which is, you know, the American Rescue Act or S R three. We haven't received any additional specific information about that, but we understand. And I think that's you're referring to as the CARES Act, the COVID CARES Act. What have I missed? I know there's a couple, there were a couple other questions in there, if you would, someone help me out here.
I know there was just a comment about solar panels and, and thanking Vice President Tony Cliff for bringing that up.
Ms. Flowers, did I miss any of Ms. Mordecai's questions?
She mentioned the two thousand sixteen ballot funds. There were something about there were money, money on the two thousand sixteen ballot. That's all I wrote here.
I don't, I'm not picking that one up.
Yeah, we'll have to go back to the transcript and get.
Okay, and Ms. Mordecai, we, we will, if we have not answered any of your questions adequately, or there's some that we have not answered, we will go back to the transcript and, and forward you those answers via email and apologize if we've missed some of those. And I think that's all I have, Ms. President Trick Scales.
Mrs. Laura Lab, I'm sorry, Mrs. Laura Lab asked us all about the grant writer.
Right, so the, the, this, the position, the new director position will have will have the federal and state grants as part of their job responsibility. We also will continue to retain services with a private grant writer who will assist us in going out for any private grants. Or even assisting in helping with some of the, the state grants as well. Our current grant writers assisting us with some of our preliminary work for the preschool expansion grants. So we will not lose that, that capacity moving forward. Thank you, Ms. Huerta.
All right, so there are a couple of questions. Dr. Kascun, let's just circle back to Ms. Cohen's about spending out of pocket for supplies. If you could address that portion of her question about the, the cut in the supply budget.
Yeah, so, you know, the one of the things that we've tried to emphasize to staff is, you know, while we know that they voluntarily, you know, purchase things out of pocket. You know, a lot of times we'll see these you know, GoFundMe pages go up and things of that nature. And what I've said to principals and supervisors is, you know, the message I want you to convey to your staff is before you do go out for a GoFundMe or something like that, you know, make your, you know, make your proposal to your building principal or your immediate supervisor. And, and, you know, forward that up to central office. Give us an opportunity to fund it with local funds. And if, you know, we're not able to do that, then at least, you know, we're all endorsing this, this fundraising campaign collectively. Because there are some cases, some things they may want to purchase or the timeline where it's just not feasible with, you know, with purchasing guidelines and requirements. So I think that would be one thing I would say. As far as, you know, as far as, as not having adequate supplies, I would suggest that the, the allocations that are, are in the budget are adequate. And what we've done differently is typically what's done in the past is, is when we budget is every department gets what they got the year before. As opposed to looking at this larger, this, 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 this overall pot of money for six, ten, which is typically your instructional supply line, and then saying, okay, you know, departments might have disparate needs from year to year. Now, there are some departments that have sort of constant needs year to year. Okay, but you know, having that be a sliding scale where we know, for example, in, say, for example, in the ELA department or the social studies department. These tend to be departments that do not have significant instructional supply needs above and beyond, say, software or textbooks or workbooks, whereas, you know, departments like art or STEM tend to be consumable or supply heavy accounts. So as opposed to just giving every department that which they've received year to year, here is this pot of six, ten money that then gets divided up, and it may not be proportionate from department to department. So the short answer to you, to your, to your question, Ms. Trick Scales, is, as I said initially, we do not foresee any challenges in having adequate funds for teachers to, to, to have what they need to do their jobs this year. And in the event that there are, then we'll, we'll get creative. And if we need to do some account transfers, that's what we'll do.
Thank you, Dr. C. The question about the not going to cap. You know, I, I think we've tried to explain that. Now, in hindsight, maybe we would say that we could have done things differently. And I've been saying that all along as, as we look back. But our intent was to be sensitive to the tax rate, to our, our residents here. It, it wasn't to minimize supplies, or it wasn't to minimize the opportunity to spend more money. And as Ms. Merklinger said, it's not as if that money is sitting there. The implications of using or being able to go to that point, to that cap has repercussions on, on taxes. And so that was our intention. We, we were trying to be sensitive to the tax increase in town. No other motivation other than that. That's clear and simple. We said we, we can't raise taxes. We later learned that even with zero taxes would still have an implication because of the, the mid-year. So I don't know how else to say it. Other than that, that was our intention. Our intention was to be sensitive to the economic situation during a pandemic and the impact that an increase in taxes would have on the residents here in West Orange. That was our motivation. Okay, is there
Ms. Trick Scales?
That we missed? Yes.
Actually, I got a couple of, a couple of notes in the chat that, I had a couple of questions, if I may. So there was a question about, about summer programs. So we have used a portion of the, of the S R two funding to fund the various summer programs that we're offering. You know, grades K through twelve, as well as some, you know, some mental health and social emotional support programs. I would envision that the S R three money, that a portion of that will be used for similar programs, but programs that operate over the duration of the school year to assist students during the year. The final question was about the increase in transportation. So actually, the original increase was larger than that. It was twenty six percent. It went down eighteen percent, I believe, by virtue of the cuts that we made to hazardous routes, if I'm not mistaken. And admittedly, that was a large increase. And this was an increase that came to us from Huntington Educational Services Commission. This is a vendor with whom we have been in business for a, a long time. I mean, I'm going to say it's, is it twenty years, Ms. Flores? Yeah, for a while. I mean, say again?
I don't know if twenty years, but it's been a long time.
Yeah, for, for a long time. And and, and their, their rates were, were, were very, very, almost kind of like rent control for a long time. The most recent contract, they were approved, it was a two percent increase per year. Now, when we spoke with Hunter in early this year, they were forthright with us that, you know, they really felt that they needed to increase it even during the lifetime of this past contract, but ultimately didn't because they felt like they wanted to respect the terms of that contract. I told them like, I really wish you would have done that, actually, because it would have made life a lot easier this year. I said, in fact, I really wish you would have just made some progressive adjustments to that percentage over the lifetime of our partnership, as opposed to erring on the side of really, really conservative in terms of the increases and then slamming us at once. You know, Ms. Flowers and, and Ms. Flores, Ms. Flores can attest to the fact that we, we went back to the table several times with them, seeing if they could bring that number down, seeing if they could split it over multiple years. Now, the question that the, that members of the community might ask, well, then why, you know, why did you stay with Hunter and Educational Services Commission? If they were, you know, why didn't you go to a, a vendor with a more competitive bid? Well, I think part, to understand that partially is to understand the volume of business that they do for us and, and the size vendor that is required to handle, to handle us, one vendor to handle all the business that they handle for us. The likelihood that we could find another vendor, one singular vendor that could do all that business and at the same time come in at a more competitive rate, even though that seems like a really high rate. But when you consider the fact that they kept our rate at an abnormally low level, even by bringing it up with the eighteen percent increase, it's at least on par, if not maybe still lower than what another vendor. If we could find a vendor that had the amount of buses that we needed to get done with one vendor. Well, why do you need one vendor? Well, I mean, you can see the moving parts that we have, and I can see it, the moving parts that we have, even trying to manage just delivering our transportation services with, with the, the small number of buses we have in our fleet and one other vendor. You add another vendor or maybe two other vendors in to the equation and managing those four vendors simultaneously. And on top of that, it just was from our perspective, was not feasible to go out for an RFP mid-year while transitioning from one business administrator to the next. It was just not the right time to do that. That being said, not unlike the self-insurance, we will be aggressively looking at both of those things. Starting now and definitely over the summer, going out for RFPs for transportation. And we told Hunter that like, well, you get one more bite at the apple here, but you know, we're looking. And, and, and it may lead us back to Hunter in any way. Final point, this is an interesting thing. Huntington actually leases space in close proximity to our district as a depot that they lease. That's actually part of the expense that's rolled into the contract in order to be able to actually have buses in closer proximity to us, because of course, they're based at Hunter County. So these are all factors that went into this. We were between a rock and a hard place with Huntington. Sort of married to them for another year. And bearing the, the result of an abnormally low rate over time that ultimately they said, we can't sustain this anymore. So that's kind of the, the long and short of, of that situation. I don't know, Ms. Flowers. Mrs. Flores, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that.
Nope, you covered it. Thank you, Dr. C.
And I think that's, and as far as the state benefits, we are actually currently in a private plan presently. And last year, we did a, we, there was, we, we actually were on the brink of going to the state benefits plan last year. It was going to represent a significant savings. And then, at the last minute, Aetna came in and said, now we can compete with that. And they gave us a lower, I think they gave us a slightly lower rate, so we stayed with Aetna. And finally, Ms. Trick Scales, it's important to recognize that any plan that the district switches to must be, is, what's the clause, equal or better? Is that? What is the word? What's the verbiage?
Yep, that's it.
Equal or better. So to what is currently offered within the collective bargaining agreements.
Are you coming back one more time, Doc?
No, I'm done.
Okay, so we are now at the point on our agenda. We are under Finance Business Office. We are recommending approval of the following proposed budget resolution. Authorized to submit the following proposed, oh, wait, let's see. I'm going to read the resolution. Be it resolved that the proposed budget be approved for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year using the twenty one, twenty two state aid figures. And the secretary to the Board of Education be authorized to submit the following proposed budget to the Executive County Superintendent of Schools for approval in accordance with the statutory deadline. Is there a motion to approve the budget? Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Any further discussion? There being none. Mrs. Flowers, would you please record the vote?
Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
President Trick Scales?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and I would just say, congratulations. This is very similar to giving birth. And so all of us, congratulations. It's a glorious moment. We are now up to Um, we are now up to petitions and hearings of citizens on any topic. Agenda off agenda items.
Okay, yes, so that's, uh, once again, if you'd like to speak at this time, it is the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And Adam Kramer, if you can follow the prompt once more, give us your name and address for the record. Adam, if you can unmute, follow the prompt on your screen.
Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Road. Um, my concern about what you just did with a passing a budget with an increase is that a large percentage of West Orange is either in arrears on their mortgage or to rent. Um, a lot of landlords are struggling and officially, July 1st, foreclosures and evictions will start. State and the federal government may make that longer. But once that starts aggravating it with a tax increase, it's going to inflict misery on some of the, um, m- most economically harmed part of the, uh, um, population of this town. And I think it's going to be problematic. Um, and that's all I have to say on that subject. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, Jeremiah Salinas, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Uh, Jeremiah Salinas, 7 Crystal Ave. Um, I just wanted to, uh, uh, speak about the reopening of the schools in September. And, and thank Dr. Cascon for, uh, clarifying some questions that, uh, parents might have. Um, we are, we are still waiting for the directions of the governor, the Department of Health, the Department of Education, both at the state level and at the federal level, as to what we're going to do. Uh, I look forward to, uh, hearing more as, as more things come out. Um, and I, 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 I do, um, again, would like to say thank you for, for your cautiousness on all of this. Um, to the board, uh, as well. Thank you for your, your hard work and dedication throughout this entire time. It hasn't been an easy road. It, it, it won't be an easy road going forward, um, as there are still a lot of questions that are, are, are left unanswered. And, um, my daughter right now is going, she, she's been in school for, um, the days that, that her group is meeting. And, uh, she's been having a great time with her classmates. And, um, again, over the summer, I hope that we have a, uh, more robust, serious discussion as to how we are going to make this a successful year, uh, starting in September. Have a good night and, uh, I'm glad that this one ended on the same day that it started. All right.
Thank you. And next, uh, it's just listed under WOES PAC.
Um, yeah, that's right.
If you can follow, uh, the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
It's WOES CPAC, Gina Velasquez for WOES CPAC, 22 Corwell Circle. First of all, I would just like to thank you guys. Um, echo some of the, the comments that were earlier. Thank you guys for all of your hard work in this challenging times. Um, thank you to all the teachers for their, you know, passion and dedication to our students. Um, and I have a couple of announcements to make, um, going forward, uh, that are coming up events. I hope this is the right time for me to be able to say it. So I'm going to keep on talking until you stop me. Um, well, first of all, I would just like to announce, um, if anybody had, we have a, we started a WOES CPAC newsletter and I would just like to ask if anybody has any type of information for resources, um, events coming up pertaining to our special education, um, students, please reach out to WOES CPAC so that I can, um, put it into our newsletter. If you have a student who is, who is, um, you want to be acknowledged for, you know, something great that they've done that you think is great, we want to hear about it. It could be as little, small, small, um, it can be big, whatever it is, we want to hear about their accomplishments. So please, um, and we want to feature them in our newsletter. So please, um, reach out to me at WOES CPAC so I can add the information and your students. And we also want to, we're looking for nominations for teachers, for staff, somebody that stands out to you that we'd also, that you would also like for us to feature in our newsletter. Okay, so we want to, um, prop the West Orange District Special Education Department up on a pedestal and show everyone the great things that they're doing. Um, second, we have a fundraiser, I only have a minute. We're having a fundraiser for Pass and WOES CPAC and it's on May 21st from 7 to 8. It's a Zoom Paint and Zip. It's going to be real, a lot of fun. You just have, we're selling kits. We have sponsor, um, sponsored packages. And, um, you'll see the, you'll see the flyer, uh, through email, hopefully on social media. But I hope that I can get your support. Um, we have many levels of support and it goes towards the, um, Class of 2021 Graduating Senior Scholarship. So it's urgent that we, um, get as much as we can, um, for this year's graduating class seniors. Okay, and the next announcement I will make at the next meeting because it's, um, it's in June. So I made it. You guys have a great evening and thank you for listening.
Hey, thank you. Uh, next we have Carol Anne. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Carol Anne Holland, 71 Lawrence Avenue. Um, I've missed several of the last meetings. Um, but I was very, very vocal in the beginning of the pandemic about staying closed. And I just wanted to thank all of you for your hard work, um, for keeping our kids and teachers and staff safe and now doing a measured return, um, to the school. I know that there are a lot of people continually expressing their frustration and I totally feel for them. I have one, my senior has gone back to school and it's been really good for him to connect with his teachers in person. My eighth grader frankly won't feel comfortable going back until he's vaccinated. Um, he's just frankly too anxious to consider it. And I think that's okay, too. And it's because of your decision-making and your strength of leadership that both of those options have been supported. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was, um, expressed. And I also appreciate the flexibility, the hope that we absolutely will be back in person as much as possible in September, but the understanding that things can change and that we need to hear from the governor, we need to see where the numbers go, we need to see the variance when the vaccines come out. So I just really appreciate the leadership this year, the flexibility, um, and the strength of decision-making. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, if there is anyone else who would like to speak, uh, please use the raise your hand function, um, at the bottom of the screen. Okay, thank you, Anna. I'm not going to butcher your last name. Uh, if you can give us your name and address for the record and follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Anna Samanamu. Uh, I live at 66 Cherry Street and I work at the high school. Uh, so I actually had a whole speech written out, but I'll try and minimize it. So again, good evening to all the board members. Um, I'd like to take the time to say thank you to all the teachers who have, who always do the impossible to like, you know, do their best in helping their students and shout out even to the educators who often go unnoticed and, you know, they try their best every single day, too. Now, as far as questions, I really don't have any, but I do have comments. And I actually appreciate much of all the transparency that has been displayed during this meeting. Um, President Trick Scales, I actually commend you, uh, for trying your best in making the right decisions. And I'm sorry, I don't want to call you out, but like, happy birthday. Um, as much as we can celebrate the budget tonight, um, I celebrate you for being a great leader. So again, like back to my comments, um, I actually second Ms. Velasquez's comment about our special education students. Um, they actually have been giving their all. And it would be great if the board can acknowledge them more often. Um, along with my colleague, uh, Ms. DeMarco at the high school, uh, our students have actually improved both virtually and in person. And I really just want to take the time to inform that and, you know, ask if you can please consider our students the way the rest of the, uh, student body is always recognized. And, you know, when we teach them about the importance of advocating and having their voice, I could tell you the amount of notes that they take and things they wish to say to, um, the superintendent and the president. And of course, it's always kind things and nice things. Um, but they often don't have the platform. So, uh, with that being said, thank you for just hearing me out and everyone have a good night.
Hey, thank you. Excuse me, Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address again for the record.
Sure, thank you. Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. Just a quick comment, you already have two transportation vendors, Sussex and Hunterdon. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is the final call for anyone, uh, who would like to speak. Use the raise your hand button. And if you're one of our call-in patrons, it is star nine. Okay, and there are no more hands raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., um, Ms. Graftiza, and thank you to, um, our speakers again. And, um, yes, it is my birthday and, and thank you. And I invited everyone to the party tonight, so thank you. I couldn't think of anyplace else I'd rather be, um, than here with the West Orange community. So thank you, everyone. Okay, um, lots of these were comments, um, Dr. Cascon. Anything you want to, uh, pick up on?
Yeah, I, I just had an idea when Ms. Samanamu, um, came, which was, I think it'd be, and, and actually, Ms. Samanamu, from time to time will reach out to me. As a matter of fact, I have a, an email from her in my inbox about some, some neat stuff she's doing. Uh, but she has great ideas. Um, and I was thinking, wouldn't it be a great idea if we worked to have, provide an opportunity at one of our board meetings? Because sometimes we'll have students come to present or maybe if we could coordinate some sort of a, you know, a presentation by their, her students, uh, Mr. Marco's students, um, you know, on the project they're working on or something of that nature, or even simply just a platform for them to come and speak to the board and some questions might be a neat student presentation that we could have. So if, Ms. Samanamu, if you're, if you're listening, uh, maybe drop me an email tomorrow, Mr. Marco, and maybe we can put together, you know, the ground, lay that groundwork for maybe one of our June meetings, maybe the first June meeting, um, for the students to come, if that's something they might be interested in doing. So that was just a thought I had as she was speaking.
Yeah, that's fabulous. And they're doing such great things. I mean, we, we read about them on Facebook and, um, so I think that's a great idea. A great idea. And, um, Ms. Velasquez, we will certainly, um, try to contribute to the newsletter. You know, we'll put our thinking caps on and make sure that we are celebrating, um, all of our students. And the paint and sip, that sounds, I like the sip part. Um, that sounds pretty inviting to me. Um, Dr. Cascon, were you about to say something else?
Just, just one other thing, President Trick Scales. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Flowers, the vent, our, our approval of the vendor Sussex, um, there, that's like a, we use them as sort of a, uh, like a backup.
Backup, yeah. Yes, when we need additional routes, we'll go to Sussex.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Alrighty, I'm looking at the clock, but I know that, um, we may, as board members, have some wrap-up type of comments. So, Ms. Huerta?
Oh, boy, me first as always. Thank you, Mrs. Terry.
That's your privilege of being the new board member. Next year, you won't be first.
Well, I, I don't mind.
It's initiation.
I'm getting used to it, so I'm, I'm stepping up to it. So I'm starting to get used to it. So thank you to the community. Um, it's definitely been a learning experience. Um, I mean, I'm having fun, I know. I, I enjoy learning, even though you get knocked down sometimes and it's difficult and, um, but I, I certainly enjoy the process and, um, enjoy listening to the, the community members, all of our community members. Um, and I did want to acknowledge, um, one community member, um, also, Mr. Kramer. I know very much, um, the concern of the, the taxpayers. And this is like, I, like we've said many times, um, we're not taking it lightly. Um, I will be on the rent leveling board in our town. And so these are concerns that are very real, that are already affecting our community, that have been affecting our community. Um, and this is not the first year and this is not, um, you know, we're not talking about the future, um, you know, next year. We're talking about right now. Um, these are things that are definitely affecting our community members now. Um, and I, you know, we don't take it lightly. Um, our local PTAs are, are looking for their next executive board, so please get involved. I have seen so much advocacy on the part of our parents, how involved and how vocal they have been. Um, but we definitely encourage this kind of, um, e- engagement on a regular basis, uh, when we are feeling strongly about things, um, you know, good, bad and different, whether we agree or not. Um, I think it's very important to, you know, teach other community members as well to, to advocate and to self-advocate, as Mrs., um, Anna mentioned before. It's very important for us, um, all of us. Um, we will be having a free tree seedling event giveaway, uh, that is, we're working with, um, our Green West Orange that will be May 8th on Saturday at Gregory and Washington Elementary School. And, uh, Dr. Cascon, you mentioned Anna Samanamu will be having, um, she will be featured on PBS's American Portrait, which is a national storytelling project. There has been a mural that has gone up in LA, uh, with her quote that states, "My brother and I are my parents' American dream." And so I just want to give acknowledgement to, um, you know, we are pr- products, both Anna and I, of the public, West Orange Public School System. Um, this is my, I know everybody thinks I'm very young, but I actually am older than Anna and I've seen her grow up too. And so it's, it makes me very proud to, you know, have roots here and see and just be here with everybody, you know, and just the community. It just makes me very proud to be a part of West Orange and continue to be a part of West Orange and to really, um, you know, invest here and be here and continue to grow and prosper in this town. Um, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta, and we're so happy you're here. Ms. Merklinger.
Great, um, so I just want to thank everyone, um, for taking the time out tonight to participate in the budget discussion and be a part of it. It's not an easy task, um, but definitely appreciate all the input, um, and emails that folks have been sending, um, and definitely keep those coming. Um, love to hear your plans and thoughts and ideas about school reopening and, and what's going on and how your students are, um, feeling. Um, but also to our staff, um, definitely want to thank you for everything you've been doing. Um, as most people know, I'm married to a teacher, so it's very close to home for me. as most people know, I'm married to a teacher, so it's very close to home for me. Um, but I definitely want to thank all of our teachers and staff and it's great to see, um, just follow up on my window with the PTAs. All of the schools have all these signs and great big things. So I want to thank the folks in the community that helped, um, to do that um, and recognize our teachers. I also want to just point out that, um, there is our West Orange Police Department and Fire Department are hosting their West Orange Junior Public Safety Academy again this year. It is free for West Orange residents and it's open for, um, children ages ten to fourteen. That will be running out of Liberty Middle School from June twenty-eighth to July second. Um, and then I also want to find out that May is also mental, is National Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, I think most folks know that I lost my best friend to suicide a few years ago. Um, so it's very close to home for me. Um, and I'm glad to see that we're focusing so much on social emotional learning for our students as they come back from, um, getting back to some normalcy. Um, it's been great on the weekends to see all the kids out at the parks and playgrounds and just participating in sports and, um, activities and, and to see that, um, is really great. So, um, definitely just keep that in mind. And with that, have a good night.
Thank you. And, uh, Vice President, Tony Cliff.
Thank you. Um, first, I just want to, uh, set, tell our teachers and that I don't know even know how to be, how to begin to possibly thank you for this year. I know this has challenged you um, in ways that probably you couldn't even imagine. And we so appreciate everything you did to turn around and learn how to deliver, um, curriculum and teach in a different way. And we are so appreciative to everything you've done, um, over the past fourteen months during this pandemic. I know it's not easy. Um, but, um, I hope you get spoiled by all your PTAs and your parents this, this week and just know that we um, do truly appreciate everything you've done. Um, as we talked a little bit about the beginning, College Decision Day was May first and, um, it has been really fun to check out the Instagram at WestOrangeTwentyTwentyOneCollegeDecisions to see where our seniors are heading off to and, um, it is a range of schools and, um, it's fun to see where they're going. So check that out. Um, last weekend, we got, I think it was last weekend, we got to see The Show Must Go On at Ospac from our, uh, wonderful, wonderful stu- talented students. Um, it was nothing, these shows that these kids do, I feel like are on a Broadway level. And I did theater in my ti- back in my day as a high school student. And, uh, it, it was nothing compared to what I saw, uh, last Saturday night. The show was absolutely fabulous and, um, it's always a real treat to be able to go and to see our students perform. And it was just a wonderful music world, musical review over the last twenty years of shows that we had done. And it was so well done and our students were just fabulous. So congratulations to all the students. You did a phenomenal job and it was just such a really fun, entertaining evening for my family. So, um, we appreciated being out and supporting you. Um, I was, uh, as you've meant, as a couple of folks have mentioned, um, I was at the Conversations on Race, um, a, which was, uh, racial justice in education and the keynote speaker was Jesse Higopian. Um, and it was sponsored by the Community Coalition on Race in partnership with Seton Hall University. And it was, it's really rare to have an opportunity to discuss, um, some of these issues with peers and others, um, in the community and to talk about sort of how you've, um, grown and what you're learning and, you know, a- as a white woman, I've had to really learn a lot and understand, um, you know, and face things that I didn't think, um, you know, microaggressions and things like that and get to understand all of that. So it was really wonderful to be able to talk in an environment that was safe and supportive and to hear, um, Mr. Higopian talk about, uh, his book, Black Lives, um, Matter and Educate in Schools. And, um, I'm looking forward to getting a copy of his booking, reading it, um, soon. But probably over the summer, but everything's done. Um, but it's really, it was a great opportunity. Um, and I also, um, just wanted to thank everybody who came on to lend their support tonight and, um, give their, their perspective of how we've handled things over the last year. I know it's been really, really tough. And as you join the board and you think you have something to add to your community, um, you know, you do this because you care about our school district, you care about the students, you care about the teachers, um, and you, you know, I've worked in, in education, in PTA, um, and thought I had something to, to offer. And I never in my life thought it would be during a pandemic. And how difficult this is, is, um, you know, you're challenged on a level that you, you didn't even think you knew you could handle. So, um, we do appreciate your, your gratitude, um, for what we've done because it's, it's been a tough year. Um, and we're, you know, trying to do the best we can for everybody. Um, and we know it's not a one-size-fits-all, um, solution. Um, but, um, and finally, I did want to just say that, um, I was asked to be per, uh, participate in a panel discussion on back to school that's coming up and it's gonna be actually recorded, um, this Thursday, and then it'll be shown to later date and I will, um, get the later date for you. I don't have it right now, but, um, it's quite an esteemed panel. Um, it's Marie Bliss Dan, who is the, um, NJEA president. Um, Angel Santiago, who is the Twenty Twenty-One New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. Um, Dr. Scott Roco, who is the Superintendent of Hamilton Township School District and was the immediate past president of the New Jersey Association of School Administrators and Carol, uh, ca- excuse me, Karen Bingert, who is the Hillsborough High School Principal and immediate past president of the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association. And I was asked to join this panel, um, I think because, um, West Orange has, uh, always been a good, um, good at what we do. And I, I'd like to think that I was asked because, um, you know, the PTA knows me. I've had a long relationship in PTA and, um, this is actually being mo- moderated by, uh, a national PTA, um, officer. So, um, that was very exciting for me. So I will give you some more information of when that airs. Thank you. And, uh, that's my report.
Well, Vice President, that is quite an esteemed panel and, and, and it's a feather in your cap, but it's a feather in West Orange's cap. So thank you so much. That, that's, congratulations. That's absolutely wonderful. We are West Orange proud. And Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you. Um, one of the really great things about, um, athletics, and I would argue also about performing arts, is that it, it teaches you that you don't always know what's coming and you need to be prepared to switch and adjust and deal with the situation where you land. And, uh, so I just wanted to say to the, uh, Theater Department students and staff who put on The Shows Must Go On, which Ms. Tunacliff mentioned, what poise and character you showed in that performance. That after this terrible year that took away your opportunity to, to shine in the way that you might have hoped to for so many years, uh, you just seized the opportunity and took the stage and blew us all away with such incredible performances and such a show of talent, um, that I know that, you know, in my family, we were talking about it for quite a while afterward. Uh, I'm very impressed with all of you and, uh, and know that we're gonna see many of you as, uh, as stars in the performing arts as time goes on. Uh, so thank you very much for what you put together there. Um, on the community standpoint, um, to all of our teachers, uh, so much appreciation to you for what you've done. Uh, as a, as a parent of a student in the West Orange schools and as a member of the community and, and this board and as a former educator myself, I see the dedication, um, that you put out there every day, the excellence and the successes that you're having. And I, I really, I don't know what else to say other than I thank you. Um, acknowledging again that this is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Um, I searched exactly those words on Google. Um, there's, there's so many great things going on. Uh, so I would encourage everyone who's still listening, do that. Just plug those words into Google. I listened to some really beautiful and moving stories on StoryCorps, uh, and then I think it's an NPR project, uh, uh, and the Smithsonian has some terrific, um, uh, stuff to take a look at and, um, events that you can participate in. There's, uh, uh, political organizations as well and historical information, so many great things. So I won't bore you with all the details, but please go and look. And then finally, um, uh, to our President, uh, Trig Scales, I was going to do a m- my attempt at a very breathy Marilyn Monroe, "Happy Birthday, Mrs. President." I'm gonna spare everybody of that. Instead, just say happy birthday and thank you for spending it with us.
Thank, thank you for that, Mr. Rothstein.
You're very welcome.
You sure? Ms. Merklinger, she's, she's not interested. Look at her. She doesn't want to hear your song. But thank you so much. Um, I'm gonna keep my comments, um, really short. But I know that Liberty Middle School had their second annual virtual gala concert, uh, the other night. So kudos to, um, the students. And, uh, Ms. Sharon Ortiz, who is a teacher at West Orange High School, I just learned that she was one of the first twenty educators in the state to receive the Teacher Leader endorsement. And so this is a big deal. And so congratulations to her. And again, I'd like to thank everyone who was on tonight and it is encouraging, um, to know that, um, some folks are feeling, um, good about the direction that the district has taken. And we thank you for sharing that. And let's see, um, we are enjoying these board meetings just so much, you know, that we had one on Friday night. We're having one tonight. And guess what? We're having one on Wednesday. But this is actually a training, uh, for the board. And, um, we do have an upcoming town hall where we definitely want input from our community on looking at district goals for the next year. And so this training is actually for the board members so that we will be able to conduct that town hall for you. And well, one other thing I wanted to mention, as part of our public relations, um, this year, board members are going to be attending, uh, virtual PTA meetings, um, for the next, uh, well, seven weeks. We have seven weeks left of school. And this is again, uh, an opportunity for us to connect, um, with, uh, parents and with our school communities. All right, I think we are down to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Is there a second? No. I have a gavel. I have a new. Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is officially adjourned.
Thank you. This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it will end for those both on-screen and off-screen and no other business will be conducted. Happy birthday, President Trig Scales. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night, everybody.